We have a quorum present for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Hingham. We'll begin with an invocation. The invocation this evening will be given by Rabbi Eric Burke of Hingham's congregation, Sharei Shalom. Rabbi Burke.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Rabbi Eric Burke of congregation Sharei Shalom, located only minutes away on Main Street. Now, I am not here to explain the override. But I am here to offer an invocation. And I want to thank you, the leaders and residents of Hingham, for this honor in recognition of the solemnity of this occasion's voice and vote in service of the common good. I'll begin in a little bit of Hebrew, translate, and then continue in English. Eloheinu ve'elohe avotenu v'imothenu, our God and the God of our mothers and our fathers. We ask that those in attendance at this town meeting, the residents and leaders of Hingham, be attentive to the importance of, as well as be blessed with, the following: perspective and patience to contemplate and educate; humility and integrity to empower and motivate; gratitude and determination to adapt and collaborate. Jewish tradition emphasizes the inherent and immeasurable benefit when all members of our society prioritize and occupy ourselves with the needs of the community. So let us proceed, guided by our highest common ideals, in pursuit of the greater collective good of this community. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Burke. Beautifully stated. The next order of business typically undertaken by Keith German is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. We are fortunate to have our Select Board Chair, Bill Ramsey, stepping in for our veteran service officer. Mr. Ramsey, please rise.
Good evening. For those willing and able, please stand and face the flag of our nation. Aye.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. The town clerk, Carol Falvey, has informed me that the meeting is properly and duly called. There is available today a booklet that contains the warrant, the warning for this meeting. It also contains the reports and the recommendations of the advisory committee, the reports of the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board, the Capitol Outlay Committee, importantly, the Planning Board set forth at pages 102 and following. That is critical for me to announce under Massachusetts law with respect to the availability and the issuance by the Planning Board of its report. There are also reports of the Personnel Board and the School Committee. I have appointed a number of citizens of the town to serve as tellers for any standing votes and any ballot votes. As is our tradition, I have admitted to the meeting a number of guests. We are pleased to have our guests with us. They are seated to my right in the guest section. They are not allowed, of course, to vote on any matters coming before the meeting. On behalf of all of the citizens of the town, I thank Harbor Media for providing the closed-circuit television coverage for this meeting. The meeting is also being reported for later broadcast on our local access cable channels. Please note, there is absolutely no smoking allowed anywhere on the premises of the school. And also take a moment to locate the nearest emergency exit that you could avail yourself of in the purpose, in the eventuality of an emergency. Also, please take this moment to silence, turn off, hide your cellphones. Please refrain from using them or texting or sending messages unless there is an emergency or some other compelling reason to do so. It is a distraction from the serious business that is town meeting. Notably, the election will take place, the town election will take place, for offices of the town and the question of an override. That election will take place on April the 29th, Saturday. The specific details can be found on page 23 of your warrant booklet and also on the town website. One note, the fire department has reminded me that the fire suppression system, the alarm system and the like is on here at the high school, but is not expected to be sounded. In the unlikely event that an alarm goes off, we are instructed to remain in our seats unless and until we are directed to leave the gymnasium or the auditorium or the cafeteria, if that should be opened, until instructed to do so. The fire department will simply look at what's happened and will only tell us to leave if, in fact, we do have a real emergency. Next, I call your attention to the Talent Bank application form that is set forth at the end of the warrant booklet, at page 110. The Select Board and the moderator always welcome volunteers for service on the many appointed town boards and committees. If you're interested, please complete a Talent Bank application, either in physical form or it's readily available on the Select Board's website. It'll take you a few minutes to fill it out. I can tell you that town service is wonderfully fulfilling. The Town of Hingham could not possibly function as it does without the many volunteers who serve on boards and committees for the common good of the town. We interview folks who offer service to the town, we being the members of the Select Board and the moderator. Those sessions typically take place in May and in June. As I'm sure you know, the town is on a June 30 fiscal year, and we try to get the appointments made so that people are up and running July 1 or shortly thereafter. The dates are always well-publicized before the interviews begin. I'll take this opportunity, working from my right to my left, to introduce the members of the Select Board: Joe Fisher, Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey. We have Carol Falvey, our town clerk, Art Robert, one of our assistant town administrators, Michelle Montsegura, also an assistant town administrator, and Tom Mayo, who was the town administrator. I now invite to the podium Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Ramsey again is the chair of the Select Board, and one of our traditions at annual town meeting is to remember those town officials and employees who have passed away since we were gathered last as a meeting at the 2022 Annual Town Meeting.
Samuel Anthony Bosco, Bruce T. Catman, Peter J. Casey Jr., Thomas P. Hall, Joyce B. Kimball, Virginia M. Machado, John S. McDonald, Nan Agnes Olson, John A. Robinson, and Camilla L. Rodri.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. One of the guests who is with us tonight is very kind to come frequently to his district, and that is our U.S. Congressman, Stephen Lynch. Mr. Lynch has faithfully come. He's come in blistering heat. He's come on the 40-yard line. He tried to get the 50-yard line, but he had to get to the 40. And he would like to use his very few minutes to bring us his greetings. I told him that no one gets more than six minutes. So you're on the clock.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the great courtesy you've extended to me, and I will not abuse that privilege. First of all, I want to say that I'm very pleased to see that we're able to receive $1.6 million in the first federal COVID relief package, the CARES Act, and another $2.43 million for the Town of Hingham from the American Rescue Plan Act. That funding does not help with recurring expenses, however. That's a one-shot deal. So unless we make other bids for other grants, that will not be recurring. Massachusetts has allocated almost 60% of the funding that it received from the federal ARPA bill. There's about $2 billion left to issue to cities and towns, and that is in the hands of the governor and the legislature. But it will continue to help towns recover from the financial and economic, excuse me, the financial and environmental impacts of the pandemic. As I'm sure as many of you already know, one of our top priorities ongoing in Congress is to negotiating the debt limit relief. This is actually to pay for matters already voted upon by Congress. So this is not new spending. This is just paying our bills. Right now, there's great controversy going forward. There's an effort on the part of the new Republican Speaker to mesh that bill with ongoing expenses and new obligations. However, that would put at risk a lot of the funding that has heretofore gone out for people who are collecting Social Security. It could cause a delay in receiving those. People who are relying on Medicare, Medicaid. There's about a quarter of a million people just in my congressional, our congressional district that rely on Medicare and Medicaid, as well as veterans' benefits. So those would all be impacted if we were not able to pass the debt limit relief legislation. We also risk increased interest rates, mortgage rates, and unemployment rates. And I'll do everything I can to ensure that we have a fair, clean, and responsible compromise to protect our economy and the hard-working people of Hingham and of the district. It's also an ongoing priority to address gun violence in our country. Right now, the Democrats have a package of several bills that we hope would reduce the incidence of gun violence that we've seen in recent weeks in various cities across the country. We're having difficulty getting that legislation to the floor, that law. Those laws include protections for victims of domestic abuse, enhanced background checks and investments in our mental health services, and it provides $750 million in funding for states to create and administer red flag laws where individuals who should not be granted a license to carry or possession of a weapon would be discouraged from doing so. We're also working diligently to update climate change resiliency. Hingham is a coastal community. One of the qualifying grant causes or areas of interest for the federal government is to help coastal communities. So I think that if we work together, your Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, and our office, I'm sure there's a way that we could fashion the needs for the Town of Hingham and qualify for the funding that's available for some of that climate change relief funding. But we have to be diligent about it and think of it this way: Any money we can get from the federal government to cover those costs will free up other money for the cities and towns to cover things that the federal government cannot or will not appropriate. As always, I want to recognize the Town of Hingham. One of the great honors I have in closing is to appoint young men and women to the Service Academies of the United States. I want to just acknowledge Joseph Wiley. His parents are Mason and Gene of 208 Prospect Street, a graduate of Hingham High School. He's now at the United States Merchant Marine Academy. And Claire Schnorr of 6 Evergreen Lane. Her parents are Gene and Peter, also from Hingham High School. She's at the United States Naval Academy. And this is on the heels of these five individuals have all graduated in the last couple of years. Joseph T. JT German, that's Keith's son, a graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy. Parents are Keith and Lisa, graduate of Hingham High School. Liam McCarthy, he's at the United States Military Academy at West Point, just graduated. Parents are Nora and Kevin, also Hingham High School. Jacob Brody, United States Air Force Academy, also. His parents are Mago and Mark, Hingham High School. Jack McLaughlin, United States Naval Academy. His parents are Mary Ellen and Hugh, 4 Steamboat Lane, graduate of St. Sebastian's. And Benjamin Maud, United States Military Academy at West Point. His parents are Michael and Anna, 214 Leavitt Street. He's a graduate of Severian Brothers High School. So those are very competitive slots at our nation's military academies. You should be enormously proud of each one of those individuals. And also be proud of the fact that Hingham, the Town of Hingham, for its size, has more sons and daughters who have attended the United States Military Academies over the past 20 years that I have been serving as member of Congress than any other city or town of the three cities and 23 towns in this congressional district. So there's something going on there. I think a lot of it, a lot of the credit goes to parents, but also to teachers, coaches, and an entire community. And in a very real way, I think a lot of it goes back to our veteran service officer, Keith German, who makes sure that each and every person who puts on a uniform from this community, whether it's a World War II vet or someone who's recently returned from Afghanistan or Iraq, that they have the love and support of this community. So I thank you for that. I've extended my time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Next, I call your attention to the moderator's message. It's set forth at pages 3 and 4 of the warrant booklet. I'll spend just a moment on it. Some of us are, including your moderator, always benefits from a refresher on some of the critical things that we do. So first, by way of reminder, people might say, oh, do you go to town meeting? Do you take part in town meeting? Remember that just as Congressman Lynch is a legislator, one of 435 members of the House of Representatives, and then, of course, augmented by 100 members of the United States Senate that serve as the legislative body for 330 million Americans, in Hingham, we take on this responsibility ourselves. So when you gather here, remember that you are gathering as the legislative body of the Town of Hingham. It is the meeting that passes the budget, that enacts the zoning bylaws, determines how much spending, what kind of schools we have. All of these things are decided by the people for the people. So how do we do this? We do this by posing to, or having posed to us, a series of questions. Articles are set forth in the warrant. This year, there are 35 articles. But as I point out in the first bullet under the introductory paragraph on page 3, so what's an article? An article in the warrant is a question. It simply states a question and invites the meeting, as a meeting, to answer the question. So something has to happen. Some action has to be taken, otherwise we just have a question floating out there. The form of action is the motion. So what is a motion? A motion is a proposed answer to the question. And critically, the proposed answer to the question must be within the scope of the question. So the question is X. The answer has to be within the scope of the question. You can't say, oh gee, we'd like to build a junior high school, and the answer is, why don't we build a bowling alley instead? That would not be within the scope of the question. Motions have to be seconded. Critically, if the advisory committee, those 15 hard-working people to my left, to your right, at those tables, if the advisory committee is recommending an affirmative motion that something happens, the motion of the advisory committee will be received as the main motion under the article. So it's the proposed answer to the question. A voter may propose to amend the motion, either to change it in part, which is an amendment, or to substitute a whole new motion, sometimes called a substitute motion. Again, it needs to be within the scope. But the fact is, if that were to happen, what the meeting, what you all would do is you would first take up the proposed amendment. Yeah, someone thinks something else should happen. We would have conversation, debate whatever on that, and then it would be voted upon. If it were adopted, the amended motion or the substitute motion would take the place of what had been the main motion, and it would become the main motion. And then we would perhaps take substantive action on that. All motions and proposed amendments, if they involve the expenditure of money, they have to be in writing. And if they're particularly complicated, if it's just a, oh, strike that and insert which, or strike which and insert that, those things we can just go on the fly. But otherwise, they have to be in writing. Limits on speaking, even if you're a member of the United States Congress, you only get six minutes the first time that you speak on a given subject. And if you were to be recognized to speak a second time on the same subject, the second time, you'd get a maximum of three minutes. All right? People who are not registered voters, as I mentioned earlier, may be admitted as guests of the meeting by the moderator. And a guest of the meeting should be granted permission to, can only address the meeting if they get permission. I know that we do have some guests tonight who wish to address the meeting, but as they seek that privilege, you will have to accord them that privilege, or they will have to not address the meeting. At the bottom of page 3, another important one, hence I call it out, is the motion for the previous question. What is that? The motion for the previous question, again reminding you of self that article is, basically, the motion is intended to end discussion and to move to a vote. The motion is not debatable. We don't have, then, have debate on whether there should be a motion for the previous question. It requires a majority vote for its adoption. Now, the moderator will decline to accept the motion for the previous question if the moderator sees that there are other voters who are seeking recognition and if, in my judgment, both sides have not yet had a fair opportunity to be heard. The moderator will accept the motion for the previous question if it appears that both sides have been heard and the discussion is becoming repetitious. Now, critical, the bullet on the top of page 4. How do we vote? All votes are taken in the first instance by voice vote. If the moderator should be in doubt as to the results of the voice vote, I just can't tell, hmm, or if seven voters rise and express doubt as to the result that has been declared by the moderator, then we will proceed to a counted vote. We effect a counted vote as a standing vote. So if that should come to pass this evening, I will go through the procedure for a standing vote. But that's how we initially do any counted vote. However, a ballot vote will be taken in lieu of, not in addition to, in lieu of a standing vote if either the advisory committee or 50 5-0 voters call promptly for a ballot vote. Now, ballot vote takes considerable time, and consequently, our practice has been not to request a ballot vote in the absence of compelling reasons to do so. Another point of order that's important to know about are motions for reconsideration. So let us assume that you act. A motion is put before you. It is accepted. The meeting votes on it. All in favor, please say aye, aye, all opposed, no. It passes. Well, it still can be reconsidered. But here, it's only three lines. Please read them carefully. No vote may be reconsidered except after a two-thirds vote on a motion to reconsider has passed. So if somebody said, I want to think of a reconsideration as a do-over. We want to have a do-over. We want to go back to the point of the beginning and reconsider the vote that we have just been, that we have taken. So that requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. A vote may not be reconsidered a second time, and it may not be reconsidered after a motion to reconsider it has failed. All right? We take up the articles in the order in the warrant. A motion to adjourn, for example, if we were not to complete the warrant tonight, which I always hope we can get through the matter before the meeting in the most efficient way possible. But if it should get late and we should determine we've had enough for tonight, we would then move to adjourn, to move to another day, the meeting, and in our tradition, that would be tomorrow night. We obviously have well exceeded our quorum, which is 300. And if you are, right now, we have Russ Kahn, who is serving as the assistant moderator in the auditorium. If need be, David Pace will oversee any goings-on in the cafeteria if we put voters in the cafeteria. So whether you're here in the gym or whether you are in one of the other venues, if you wish to speak, please get my attention. I get help from people here who see the room in ways that I may not if I'm busy looking at something else, and seek our attention. And when you are recognized, go to one of the microphones. You see them cleverly placed with numbers on them. It also helps me to say I will recognize the voter at microphone four, for example. And then the critical thing is, speak into the microphone. Tell your fellow voters who you are, your name and your address. And even if you were to get up a second time or on a different article, please introduce yourself each and every time and get that microphone close to you, as we say sometimes, make believe it's an ice cream cone. Get close, because it's nothing more frustrating than having some really useful, intelligent comment coming from a voter. I see David Pace is taking his place in the cafeteria. And we're going to start. So let's move to page 24. And we will begin our, as my predecessor used to say, our journey through the warrant. The first few items are ones we see each year. We can usually make efficient progress in getting through them, and I will effectively abstract some of the language to make it sensible, and particularly where I think this is something that is going to go through fairly expeditiously. So the first article, the first question asks, "Will the town choose all necessary town officers other than those to be elected by ballot, including the following? Will the town choose one member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of three years?" The advisory committee and the Select Board have voted unanimously in support of the article and of the motion that is set forth on page 24, right above Article 2. "It is recommended that Laura Boyle, 22 West Moreland Street, be reelected as a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of three years. Is there discussion on that motion?" Seeing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, the recommended motion of the advisory committee, please say aye. All opposed, no. That is a unanimous vote. Article 2. Article 2 is one we see every year and probably will see forever. "Will the town, in accordance with and only to the extent permitted by Massachusetts general laws applicable, as amended, assume liability for all damages that may be incurred by work to be performed by the DCR, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, for the improvement, development, maintenance, and protection of tidal and non-tidal rivers, streams, harbors, tidewater, foreshores, and shores along a public beach within the town in accordance with Section 11 of Chapter 91? And authorize the Select Board to execute and deliver a bond of indemnity to the Commonwealth, assuming such liability, or act on anything relating thereto." This is something we are obliged to do, and you can see in the comment, "DCR, as a matter of policy, requires the town to assume this liability if the DCR is to perform any type of this work within the town." So the recommended motion follows strictly the question. It is clearly within the scope. Is there any discussion on the recommended motion of advisory and the Select Board in support of the Article 2? Seeing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, the recommended motion under Article 2, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It too is unanimous vote. As I said, there are many town committees and boards, some of which report to this body. They were created by town meeting, and they report to town meeting. And Article 3 is the article by which we receive those reports. We're not necessarily approving the content, but we are receiving... We're not necessarily approving the content, but we are receiving the reports of the ADU Study Committee on through to the Weir River Water System Transition and Evaluation Committee. I could read them all, but it doesn't seem to be a useful expenditure of our time. The comment, of course, thanks the public-minded citizens who work in all of these capacities, and the advisory committee and the select board have suggested that we support this article. They have voted for it unanimously. The recommended motion is right there. On page 25, is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote on the recommended motion on, under Article III. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Unanimous. Personnel Board. The Personnel Board has its report, and I'll spend a couple of minutes here, because they do a lot that you may not be aware of. "Will the town accept the report of the Personnel Board, appointed under the Classification and Salary Plan, or act on anything relating thereto?" The Personnel Board, as it says, was established to administer, of all things, the Personnel Bylaw of the Town of Hingham. And it consists of five volunteers. They are appointed by the moderator, and they serve three-year terms. Their basic duties are set forth in the first paragraph of the comment, to administer the Personnel Bylaw, to oversee the Classification and Salary Plan, to review and modify as necessary job descriptions, pay rates, all sorts of things, all of which relate to personal... Yeah. Thank you. They keep me honest, right? To do collective bargaining on behalf of the town. So the, other than the schools, so police, firefighters, library, DPW, all of those units have their collective bargaining contracts negotiated on our behalf by the Personnel Board. So you can see in the warrant at page 25 that they have concluded negotiations in this past year with the Department of Public Works, which is represented by Teamsters Local 25, and they concluded a contract that, with the extension and the new contract, will run through June 30, 2025. So their report is on file, and the advisory committee, the select board, and the Personnel Board have all voted unanimously in support of this article. And the recommended motion is set forth at the top of page 26. It follows the question, the article, but it does include the amount necessary in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, line 6, after the semicolon, "that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $302,497 for purposes of this vote." So that is the matter before you with the unanimous recommendation of select board, advisory committee, and the Personnel Board itself. Is there discussion either here in the gymnasium or in one of the other locations? Hearing none in the auditorium. Is there elsewhere, Russ or David?
No, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. It appears not. Russell, can you hear audio from?
I can hear. Does anybody in the auditorium wish to be heard on this? I saw some movement, but I couldn't be sure if anybody was raising their hands.
I'm glad they're moving.
No, nobody desires to be heard, Mr. Moderator.
All right, so we come to vote. All those in, all those who wish to vote in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. I have a unanimous vote in the gymnasium. Russ?
Unanimous.
David?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We now go on to Article V, salaries of certain town officers. The question there is, "Will the town fix the salaries of the following town officers?" You see them listed there, select board, assessors, town clerk, members of the municipal light board. The advisory committee and the select board voted unanimously in support of this article, and you can see it set forth there under the recommendations. Select board is $2,000 each, except the chair receives $2,500 for the period of incumbency. Board of assessors, $1,800, chair at $2,000. The town clerk is a position within the Hingham Classification and Salary Bylaw of the Personnel Bylaw administered by the Personnel Board, and that is a grade 10 position. And with respect to the municipal light board, light board members are compensated the annual rate of $214 to be paid for from the light department. So that is the recommended motion. Not surprisingly, it comes with the unanimous recommendation of advisory and the select board. Is there discussion? And let me know, Russ and Dave, if you see any discussion in your room. Otherwise, I'll assume none. If not, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion under Article V, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's unanimous in the gym?
Unanimous in the auditorium.
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
All right. So we now go to Article VI. Article VI is our budget article, and let me explain how we do the budget article generally and how we're going to do it this year, since it has a second component, which has gotten some significant attention. So we come to Article VI. Now, Article VI is the budget. And one thing that the moderator can do, which I am doing and have determined to do this year and shared in the meetings running up to tonight, is to divide the question. And so the question is going to be divided, and therefore by you all, decided in its two component parts. And effectively, what we're going to do is we are going to do the balanced, the so-called balanced budget piece first. And I want to make certain that everyone understands fully and deeply what it is we're about to do, because it is 150 million bucks or so. So if you look at your warrant on page 26, and I'll go through this in excruciating detail, but let me give you the overview first. Article VI starts at page 26, and it lays out various spending by category. These are called accounts, Account 122, Account 131, and the like. And it runs through page 32. It runs through account number 915, property and liability insurance. In each instance, there's a line item, and you can see that they sum up to $143,926.374. And that is what the advisory committee is recommending with respect to a balanced budget that does not exceed the levy limit. So without a whole tutorial on two and a half, Massachusetts cities and towns can only raise so much money from the property tax under what has been called for many years Proposition Two and a Half. So there are two things at work here. On the revenue side, the town's revenue is capped, what it can gather from the property tax, at the levy limit. And a Massachusetts budget, unlike Mr. Lynch's budget, has to be balanced. You can't run a deficit. We can't print money. So the first thing we have to do is pass a budget, a balanced budget. And you will hear from a number of people that that $143,926.374 is considered by, for example, your advisory committee and select board and the school committee to be not adequate to fund the services that are being recommended. But that's the most we can charge. We're capped. So that's the 143. We'll call it 144. It's close enough. So we are going to work through the budget. Last year, for example, on a budget that was around the same thing, we went through it. There were no holds. There was, and people were thoughtful, but they approved the budget on a unanimous voice vote. So we're going to work through to page 32. And then by dividing the question, what we are doing is we are dealing with page 33 as if it were a separate article. Okay? That's what you do when you divide the question. And then we will take action on what I will refer to as 999. That's the override. So again, we want to come out of this meeting with a budget, so people can know they have, well, we have at least $143,926.374 to work with. Then we'll have discussion and debate on the other $7,894.67, but not yet. One thing at a time. This is complicated enough. And then, of course, as you know, there will be presumed for a moment that the operational, well, I don't need to say that. Whatever may happen tonight with respect to the operational override, there will be on the ballot, as it says at the top of page 33, a ballot question. So for the override to become effective requires two things. It requires the action of the legislature, this group, and the action of the voters. So tonight, you're not just a voter, you're a legislator. Okay? So we're first going to do Article VI. And what we traditionally do when we come to Article VI, which hasn't come with an override component since, I think, 2009, so it's been, whatever, it's been 13 or 14 years since we've had this come before, the legislative body that is Town Meeting. What we traditionally do is we hear from the chair of the advisory committee to explain to us in six minutes or less, tell us why Article VI. You people have worked on it for months, you're coming to us, and again, I don't know, maybe I'm thinking Microsoft. I have described this to folks here at our kind of tech meeting yesterday, where we have kind of Article VI and Article 6.1. All right? So 999, the override, will come later, but let's do the base budget first. So I'll recognize George Danus, who serves as the advisory committee chair. Mr. Danus, if you can come to the center microphone here. Tell us who you are, where you live, and speak in a nice, loud voice.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is George Danus. I live at 14 Coolidge Avenue, and I am the chair of this year's advisory committee. Tonight, I am going to introduce two budgets to you. First is the balanced budget, which we will discuss and vote. State law requires the town to have a balanced budget where revenues match expenditures. Since current revenues are insufficient to meet current operating expenses, a balanced budget will require cuts in existing services and personnel. After we vote the balanced budget, I will introduce an override budget, which we will also discuss and vote. The override budget will include, the override budget will maintain current services and staff while also addressing several chronically underfunded areas. I realize this is not the normal process, but it is a necessary one, given our financial condition. For the past 14 years, we have been able to avoid an override by relying on new growth to balance our budgets while deferring increasingly necessary staff additions and capital spending. New growth has now slowed while expenses have continued to grow. When the pandemic hit, we added staff and programs to deal with its consequences and used unassigned fund balance and federal funds to pay for those expenses in both FY22 and In approving both of those budgets, we've recognized that the town would need an override to fund the FY24 budget in order to maintain currently existing services and programs. In developing the FY24 budget, this year's AdCom, a group of 15 appointed citizens faced a difficult task. Our financial forecast showed a $6 million difference between revenue and expenses. This deficit would need to be closed by cutting existing services, programs, and staff in order to have a balanced budget. AdCom quickly determined that a balanced budget would have a significant and long-term adverse impact on our town and citizens. This slide gives you a snapshot of the proposed expense reductions needed to produce a balanced budget on the municipal side. The proposed cuts include the elimination of 19 positions, taking a fire truck or ambulance from service on impacted shifts, closing the library on Sunday, eliminating the townwide field maintenance program, reducing public safety staff, and reducing playing field mowing and townwide trash pickup, among other things. And here on slide three are the cuts on the school side. To get a balanced budget, the schools would eliminate 46 positions. There would be reduced course offerings and less student choice and scheduling flexibility. There would be increased workloads for school counselors, extended replacement timeline for textbooks, and reduced support and access to libraries and language labs. The advisory committee does not believe that a balanced budget reflects the core values and beliefs of the town's citizens. We believe a balanced budget would reverse years of progress in both educational programs and services and support provided to residents. The advisory committee voted unanimously in favor of the balanced budget because the town must have a balanced budget. We also voted unanimously in favor of the override budget, which we will discuss shortly. I ask for your support on this balanced budget in order to comply with state law, but with the understanding that we will shortly take up and vote on an override budget that, in the opinion of the advisory committee, reflects the values, beliefs, and needs of the town. Thank you.
We now come, we now come to turn on the microphone. We now come to Article VI without regard to the override. So you can go to page 26, and let me explain what we're going to do for the first component of what Mr. Danus has just spoken to of the balanced budget that taxes up to but not above the levy limit. So the recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth in the warrant booklet. It begins at page 26. The introductory portion of the motion refers to the appropriations for fiscal '24, which will begin on July 1, 2023, and run through June of '24. We will deal first with the balanced budget portion of Article VI, which runs from page 26 through page 32. Only after we have taken final action on this portion of the Article VI, down through account number 915 on page 32, then, and only then, will we proceed to the operational override portion, which is set forth at page 33. As I mentioned earlier, we are doing this by way of dividing Article VI into its two basic components and dealing with the balanced budget portion first, and then the operational override recommendation as if they were two separate articles. So let's look at page 26, and you will see that each of those items contains three columns of numbers. The far right is what's appropriated a recommendation, what is recommended for appropriation by AdCom for fiscal '24. So as we've done for many years, I will, with respect to the balanced budget portion, again exclusive of the operational override portion, I'll read each item to be appropriated for fiscal '23 as recommended in each case by advisory. This runs from page 32, and as I've said now on more than one occasion, total is $143,926.374. 143,926, 374. If you want to raise a question or an objection with respect to any item on the balanced budget, or if you'd like to propose a higher amount, or a lower amount, or no amount at all, then after I've read the item and the dollar amount, you can call out hold, so that I will hear you if you're in the gym. Russell will take any holds in the auditorium, and David Pace in the cafeteria. If there are holes in those locations, they'll have to report them to me. I'll mark them as held in my book here. We'll put the held items aside until we have completed the reading of the of the whole of the balanced budget portion of Article Six, at which point we'll take up any items that have not been held as to which no question has been raised. We'll vote on them kind of provisionally. Then we'll go back and take up any item that has been held and allow discussion, questions, debate. And action on the balanced portion, the balanced budget portion of Article Six, that is from one twenty-two, the Select Board, down and inclusive of nine fifteen on page thirty-two. Action under the balanced budget portion of Article Six will not be considered final so as to require a two-thirds vote for reconsideration or any other procedure applicable to reconsideration until all action under the balanced budget portion of Article Six has been completed. After we have taken final action on the balanced budget portion of Article Six, then we will move to the operational override recommendations, which are set forth on page thirty-three, and total seven million eight hundred ninety thousand four sixty-seven. There will be a quiz after. So we will start on page twenty-six, and I will read each line item and the recommended amount through account nine hundred fifteen as set forth on page thirty-two. So here we go. So what I'm about to do, you see on the comment, the entire budget, including what I'm about to read, the balanced budget portion, comes to you with the unanimous recommendation of the advisory committee and the Select Board and also the unanimous support of the school committee with respect to items that relate to the school budget. So I'll read the recommendation, and then we start with the numbers. It is recommended that the town raise appropriate and/or transfer for each of the following purposes for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2023, FY twenty-four. The sum of money stated therefore, provided that a one-time appropriation and transfer of the opioid settlement funds in the total amount of $250,577 is hereby made to balance the FY twenty-four budget as allocated below within the Health Department and provided that where a transfer appropriation is stated, the amount so indicated shall be transferred or specifically appropriated as stated. Also that the authority is hereby given to turn in vehicles and equipment in partial payment for vehicles and equipment purchased in those cases where a turn-in is stated and provided that any amount or portion thereof appropriated to a subaccount and included in a numbered account as set forth below may be transferred to another subaccount under the same numbered account with the approval of the Select Board and the Advisory Committee. So now we begin. If for some reason, you know, for some reason, if you wish to hold something, just call out "hold" so that I'll hear you if you're in here or Russell or David will hear you if you're in either the auditorium or the cafeteria. So we begin. Select Board: Payroll $588,953. Expenses $81,575. Human Resources: Payroll $174,474. Expenses $3925. Reserve Fund: $734,184. Town Accountant: Payroll $329,824. Expenses $10,150. Audit $76,500 even. Information Technology: Payroll $252,999. Expenses $484,465. Capital Outlay $116,000 even. Assessors: Payroll $321,201. Expenses $11,358. Consulting $52,000 even. Map Maintenance $300. Treasurer Collector: Payroll $372,050. Expenses $53,535. Tax Titles $10,000. Legal Services: $395,372. Town Meeting: Payroll $3230. Expenses $57,050. Town Clerk: Payroll $208,474. Expenses $16,720. Elections: Payroll $27,545. Expenses $20,632. Conservation: Payroll $202,854. Expenses $33,747. Community Planning: Payroll $178,206. Expenses $24,205. Land Use and Development: Payroll $105,487. Expenses $7375. Bear Cove Park: Payroll $24,757. Expenses $9390. Town Hall: Payroll including overtime of $12,200. $277,746. Expenses $319,800. Capital Outlay $104,000. G.A.R. Memorial Hall: $7,055. Police: Payroll including overtime of $478,829 for a sum of $6,644,678. Expenses $495,750. Capital Outlay $155,658. Fire: Payroll including overtime of $8,53201 and $1.6 million from ambulance receipts totaling $6,756,816. Expenses $677,228. Capital Outlay including $404,404,000 from available reserves, $637,957. Dispatch: $1,085,127. The Building Department: Payroll $271,342. Expenses $14,910. Animal Control: Payroll including overtime of $7,059,77,158. Expenses $6,200. Harbor Master: Payroll $249,995. Expenses $85,343. Capital Outlay of $144,000, which comes from the Municipal Waterways Fund. Public Safety Utilities: Emergency Water $453,250. Street Lighting $107,100. Education: The School Department: Payroll $51,928,388. Expenses of $9,163,833. Capital Outlay $1,053,362. The D.P.W. Highway Tree and Park: Payroll including overtime of $97,944. $2,390,812. Expenses $836,130. Capital Outlay $1,008,000. $1,008,000. Snow Removal: $630,286. Road Maintenance: $387,000 even. Transfer Station: Payroll including overtime of $43,329,662,393. Expenses $1,191,460. Capital Outlay $60,000 even. Sewer: Payroll including overtime of $32,201 totaling $429,194. Expenses of $327,700. Capital Outlay of $437,000. Engineering of $10,000 even. M.W.R.A. Charges of $2,366,565. Debt Service of $68,848. The Hull Intermunicipal Agreement Charges $445,869. That totals $4,084,483, which will be funded by sewer revenue. The Health Department: Payroll including the $27,917 from opioid settlement funds, $321,752. Expenses of $241,522, including $22,22660 from the opioid settlement funds. Capital Outlays of zero. Elder Services: Payroll $249,952. Expenses of $10,785 and nothing for capital outlay. Veteran Services: Payroll $121,821. Expenses $8597. Benefits of $150,533. Health Imperatives this year: No funding. South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center: No funding. Library: Payroll including overtime of $74,501. $1,738,511. Expenses $300,127. Capital Outlay $66,500. Recreation: Payroll $122,604. Expenses zero. Trustees of the Bathing Beach: Payroll $27,372. Expenses of $11,750. Historic Preservation: A payroll of $85,796. Expenses of $9,713. Celebrations: Zero. South Shore Country Club. Celebrate on your own. Payroll. Payroll $1,045,198. Expenses $902,300. Debt Service $357,500. Capital Outlay $450,000. Now, the sum of the Country Club revenue and the balance of $450,000 is funded from Country Club retained earnings. Next item, seven thirty. The Weir River Water System: The payroll $274,503. The expenses $7,729,752. And debt service $6,150 even. That full sum of $14,154,255 to be funded from the Weir River Water System revenue. Debt Service $8,783,729. Then we get into employee benefits. Group Insurance: Count nine hundred. $7,439,200. Other Employee -- employment, rather, benefits, so-called OPEB, Contributory Retirement Expense $6,303,180. Workers' Comp $330,000 even. Unemployment $30,000. Mandatory Medicare Payments $1,168,197. Last, nine hundred fifteen. Property and Liability Insurance $1,225,910. For a total on the balanced budget portion of $143,926,374. One forty-three, nine, twenty-six, three, seventy-four. Russell, there were no holds in the gymnasium. Were there any holds in the auditorium?
No, there were not, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pace in the cafeteria?
No holds in the cafeteria, Mr. Moderator.
All right. With nothing held, I would suggest that we now come to vote. So all those in favor of the balanced budget portion of Article Six, which totals $143,926,374, as I have just dutifully read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposition in the auditorium, Russell?
No, Mr. Moderator.
And David in the cafeteria?
No opposition.
Okay, so we have unanimous vote on the basic budget. So now, we're going to look in the book. I'm sorry, oh, yes.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move to reconsider the previous question. I'm sorry, George Miller, 479 Main Street.
Is there a second on the motion for reconsideration? So the motion for reconsideration has been duly made and seconded. As I read earlier, a motion for reconsideration is, in parliamentary parlance, a request for a do-over that we should reconsider what we just did unanimously. So all those in favor of a motion for reconsideration which requires a supermajority of two-thirds for passage, please say aye. Any groundswell of support in the gymnasium? This is the gymnasium. The auditorium, Russell?
No votes in favor in the auditorium.
How about you, David?
Only a couple votes in favor.
Okay, so fewer than two-thirds of the voters having voted in favor of the motion for reconsideration, the motion fails, and we have now taken final action on the balanced budget portion of Article Six. And that action is final. It cannot be reconsidered again. And we will move to 6.1, which is the operational override section. It is set forth at page thirty-three. And since it is a separate topic, I will invite our subject. I'll invite Mr. Danus forward again to speak to any additional comments he wants to make with respect to the advisory committee's position recommending the operational override, which sums up to $7,894,67. Mr. Danus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is George Danus, fourteen Coolidge Avenue, Chair of the Advisory Committee. I am now going to ask you to join the unanimous recommendation of the advisory committee and the Select Board and approve a $7.9 million override to fund the FY twenty-four budget. Since last December, the advisory committee has held sixteen meetings with department heads and administrators to understand their budgets and the key factors that drive their expenses. We studied the school staffing audit in conjunction with the student enrollment, the school's strategic plan, student test scores, and the number of students on education plans. On the municipal side, we examined public safety service calls, overtime, and additional performance standards. During these meetings, we discussed plans for a balanced budget, a level services budget, and the justification for any proposed additional spending. As I previously stated, the advisory committee does not believe the balanced budget reflects the core values and beliefs of the town's citizens. We believe a balanced budget would reverse years of progress in education and services and support provided to residents. AdCom carefully considered the makeup of an override budget. Proposition Two and a Half caps revenue growth through the levy, and an override would enable the town to reset revenue to match the expenses needed to provide the level of services and programs wanted by the citizens. The advisory committee felt that the override should contain two components. First component is the amount necessary to fund the currently existing services and programs available to citizens, otherwise known as level services spending. This amount includes the sixty-five positions and other cuts totaling $6 million needed to produce a balanced budget. An additional amount to fund necessary and long-deferred items. This amount would be $1.9 million. And the total of these two numbers is the $7.9 million override. For the level services component, we determined that the impact of the pandemic on student learning and social and emotional well-being was ongoing and that programs and staff put in place to address these issues needed to continue. On the municipal side, we determined that the expense cuts in the balanced budget would substantially impact the ability of departments to provide necessary services to residents. Next, we examined the proposed additional spending requests and included about half of the requested amount in the override budget. Here is a look at the additional items included in the override budget on the municipal side. We added funds for an assistant town engineer, a senior center program director, four firefighters to address understaffing and overtime issues, a sustainability coordinator, additional hours for the part-time veterans admin, and funding for budgeting and financial software. And here are the additions on the school's side. School additions included a reclassification of annual computer expenditures from the capital budget to the operating budget. We added funds to hire a nursing coordinator. We funded increased professional development, and we added funding to begin to phase out full-day kindergarten fees. AdCom also added spending for capital needed to maintain current infrastructure and replace aging equipment. Our current financial policy states that capital spending should be three to six percent of the operating budget, but actual expenditures have typically been under the three percent minimum required by the policy. The advisory committee felt strongly that an override budget needed to contain a commitment to reduce future expense growth rates. Working with the full cooperation and collaboration of the Select Board, the school committee, and the administrations, we developed a memorandum of understanding to limit future annual growth in expense budgets to three and a half percent and to de- growth in expense budgets to three and a half percent and to defer any future potential override until FY twenty-eight or later.
You have one minute.
This MOU is contingent on a successful override vote, but provides the town with predictable future expense growth that is well below historical growth rates. EdCom feels that the MOU is a critical part of the budget process and that it gives the town the expense growth stability and predictability that it has not had in the past. One major concern of EdCom was how this override budget would affect taxpayers. This chart shows that, how the override impacts taxes at the twenty-fifth, fiftieth, and seventy-fifth percentile. As you can see, the median assessed property value, which is nine hundred thousand dollars, would see a tax increase of seven hundred and fifty-one dollars or slightly less than two hundred dollars per quarter in FY twenty-four.
Your time has expired.
With a seven point nine million dollar override. The advisory committee, along with the select board unanimously voted in favor of the override budget, and we ask that you agree with our recommendation and support the seven point nine million dollar override budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Danus. I recognize, on behalf of the select board chair, Mr. Ramsey. And you too, Mr. Ramsey, have six minutes.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Bill Ramsey, fifty-five North Street, speaking for the select board. In two thousand and four, my father came to town meeting with the specific intention of voting against a proposed override. He was retired, on a fixed income. His children had long outgrown the school system, and he wasn't sure he could afford what was being requested. But he ended up voting for the override that night, and when I later asked him why, he said to me, the stakes were too high not to support what was being requested. Tonight, the stakes are twice as high as they were back in two thousand and four. And your select board supports this override because we believe that will help our community build a bridge to the future and will put us in a better place than we were in before the pandemic. Included in this proposal before you this evening is a program coordinator for our senior center, a position our seniors have been asking for since two thousand and twelve. A sustainability coordinator to help us achieve our climate goals and objectives, and hopefully take us to a future with zero carbon emissions. And four new firefighters that we need to improve morale and readiness within the ranks of our fire department. Within the school department budget, the preservation of vital positions that were added during the pandemic, positions that were added to address learning loss in math and reading, and positions that have put our students on a trajectory for future success. And equally as important, before you tonight is an agreement between your town leadership to cap budget growth moving forward at three point five percent, an agreement that will finally allow us to achieve a sustainable budget. Now, I know the request tonight is certainly not an insignificant one. And for those who need assistance, I'm going to again encourage you to avail yourselves of one of the many tax relief programs we have in town for our seniors, for those with disabilities, and our veterans. And your select board will continue to fund those programs at the maximum amount allowable under the law. So the choice tonight is clear. Do we accept cuts to services to our police, our fire, our DPW, to our senior center, and our town library? And do we accept cuts to services to our school department that I submit to you would cause irreparable harm and would set back decades worth of progress? Or do we move forward? So I'm gonna ask you tonight, I'm gonna ask you to join your unanimous school committee, your unanimous advisory committee, and your unanimous select board in helping to build that bridge. Vote yes on this override, move our community forward, don't go back.
Thank you. I recognize. Let me get there. Problem of lava layers. I recognize Michelle Eyre, Chair of the School Committee. Thank you.
Glad for that, I was glad for that pause in between there, not after following that act. Michelle Eyre, forty-one Hemlock Road, speaking on behalf of the School Committee. So, here we are. After years of forecasting, compromise, and deliberation, we come together tonight as a community to decide if we will provide our schools and our municipal departments with the funding they need. For those who aren't sure why schools require this override and question why we can't cut positions that were added during the pandemic emergencies, those are good questions. I know that because the very smart people behind me and to my left had the very same questions. So tonight, I'm gonna provide you with some answers. For over a decade, our schools received level service funding, but level service funding does not mean adequate funding. Year after year, the school committee and school leadership explained that the needs of students were increasing, and that level service funding meant less and less of those needs were being met. For years, the school committee and school leadership identified significant achievement gaps, which required additional funding for staffing and resources. We did not get that funding. Then the pandemic hit. The critical needs were suddenly so grave and so evident, the town meeting two thousand and twenty-one unanimously supported the addition of thirty-two positions to address the long-identified needs for these roles, and we finally were able to add these positions to our budget. So we have to acknowledge, these positions were not simply a COVID recovery response. They are still needed to recover from years of chronic underfunding of our school and our student needs. The people in these roles are addressing the very real, very critical levels of stress and anxiety that threaten a student's academic performance and well-being. For every educator, parent, and grandparent in this room, you know what I mean. Children are living in an incredibly stressful world, and they cannot progress when they are stressed and they are anxious. But we can help them if we are willing to approve the recommendation of the dozens of our community members who have spent thousands of hours understanding the needs of our students who are making this recommendation for this override. This recommendation was not made lightly. It came after extensive review and exhaustive meetings. This recommendation considered the comprehensive staffing audit that was undertaken by two superintendents, and it proved that Hingham Public Schools staffing ratio is consistent with our benchmark and comparable communities. Hingham Public Schools are not overstaffed. The audit identified areas where staff could be more efficiently utilized, and that's in this budget. The recommendation for the override considered reams of data, pinpointing pandemic-related learning loss and pre-pandemic performance gaps. That drove the budget decisions to create more efficient technology, enhance supports, and reallocate existing resources to help children meet their potential. The recommendation for this override considered the pandemic-related decline in enrollment that while significant, equated to less than two people, two children per classroom. That's simply not enough to close classrooms and eliminate positions. All of this work led the school committee, the advisory committee, and the select board to the same unanimous conclusion. These positions create efficiencies while also improving student achievement. So while the federal grants and rainy day funds we relied on to postpone an override have expired, that does not mean we can abandon the progress we have finally begun to make. Our schools must have adequate funding, and the fact is, an adequate level of funding requires an override. Now, I understand, no one wants to pay more taxes. I don't want to pay more taxes. But I do want to live in a community that supports its municipal employees.
You have one minute, Michelle.
I want to live in a community that respects the past and understands that the world has changed. I want to live in a community that finds ways to care for the people who need a little extra help. I want to live in a community that recognizes the responsibility that we all hold to meet the needs of the children in our care. I believe that's this community, our community, Hingham. And if this community believes what I believe, then the answer to the override tonight must be a resounding yes. Thank you.
I'll now proceed to read the items under nine nine nine. And as I said, we will ultimately vote on the whole after appropriate debate and discussion. So I will just read them along now. School committee, strike that. School department payroll, three million, six thirty-eight, five eighty-one. School department expenses, nine seventy-three, one eighty-three. School department capital outlay, two hundred fifteen thousand even. Select board payroll, one seventy-two, six hundred. Select board expenses, thirty-five thousand. Information technology payroll, sixty-nine thousand, one fifteen. Information technology expenses, fifty thousand. Treasurer collector expenses, three thousand. Town clerk expenses, one thousand. Conservation payroll, sixty-five hundred forty-one. Conservation expenses, five thousand even. Community planning payroll, eighty thousand, seven seventy. Land use and development payroll, sixty-four thousand, fifty-three. Town hall payroll, thirty-two, nine twenty-seven. Town hall expenses, twenty thousand. GAR hall expenses, ten thousand. GAR hall capital outlay, ninety-four thousand. Police payroll, two-two-nine, two-four-three. Police capital outlay, sixty-seven thousand even. Fire payrolls, nine, strike that, six twenty-four, forty, six hundred twenty-four thousand, forty. Fire expenses, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred. Animal control payroll, forty-seven hundred. DPW Highway Tree and Park payroll, five seventy-six, nine nine nine. DPW Highway Tree and Park capital outlay, one twenty-four even, hundred and twenty-four thousand. Transfer station payroll, fifty-five thousand, forty-eight. Health department payroll, ninety-one thousand, three forty-one. Elder services payroll, ninety-eight thousand, four twenty-nine. Elder services expenses, seventeen thousand, five twenty-five. Veteran services payroll, twenty thousand, eight forty-two. Health imperatives, twenty-seven hundred. South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center, thirty-seven hundred. Library payroll, sixty-seven thousand, seven thirty-two. Library expenses, one hundred eighteen thousand, twenty. Recreation payroll, seventy-two thousand, five hundred twelve. Recreation expenses, one hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred forty-five. Celebrations, eighteen thousand, six hundred twenty-one. That totals the seven million, eight ninety-four, sixty-seven. Is there a discussion?
Sure.
Yes, recognize the voter at microphone one in the gymnasium, and also ask Russell and David, if voters should wish to be recognized, please make certain that I know that so I can recognize voters in either the auditorium or the cafeteria. Yes, please.
I'm Dottie Bezenia. I live at three oh one Linden Pond's Way. I have, new to this Massachusetts, and I've never heard of a transfer station. What is it?
I must have missed your question, but apparently everyone else did not.
What is a transfer station?
A transfer station, in common parlance, it would be a place you would take your debris, your trash, your leaves, your grass, your garbage, may I?
It's the dump.
It's formerly known as the dump. The difference is, why is it a transfer station? With a dump, it stays there. With a transfer station, it gets sorted, the recyclables and the like, and then, living on Cross Street, within moments of the exit from the transfer station, trucks laboriously take the materials away to some other community where they dispose them. Hence the transfer station. Yes, sir, microphone two. He's moving smartly past microphone two to the center field.
Good evening. My name is Dick Poit. I live at three Hollyhark Lane. I've lived in Halem for forty-six years. I am a volunteer at the senior center. I teach, I like games, I teach bridge, I teach Mahjong. I've been teaching at the senior center for over fifteen years. I've taught over three hundred people how to play Mahjong and socialize by being able to play a game with people their ages. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my senior center. If this override does not pass, we will not get a program coordinator. This is a position that every peer town senior center, whether it's Norwell, Hull, Cohasset, Marshfield, Weymouth, they all have a full-time person. We had one until two thousand and twelve, and for some reason, that coordinator decided to retire and move to New Hampshire. I happened to be active in the senior center at the time of this happening, and for some reason, the director at the time felt that her responsibilities could be assigned to other people without having to spend that kind of payroll. It was a bad decision. We need this position in our senior center. We need a lot more than that in our senior center. We have one of the smallest senior centers in Massachusetts. I know we're gonna take a look at it, and I was on a board that, ten years ago, recommended a twenty thousand square foot facility. Today, we're looking at maybe expanding our five thousand to fifteen thousand. That won't do it. I go to the new senior center in Situate, which is beautiful. They built it for about twelve million dollars. It's a two-story, built-from-the-ground building, fifteen thousand, six hundred square feet, seventy parking spaces, a year old, and guess what? It's outgrown itself already. They have to have valet parking two days a week because the parking is inadequate with seventy spaces. We have twelve spaces in our senior center. Doesn't make any sense. I look at not only the senior center, but I look at all of the other services. I look at not only the senior center, but I look at all of the other services that are going to be, and need to be provided by allowing this override to pass. Whether it's the four firemen that we desperately need, we're spending overtime for firemen. That doesn't make any sense. This morning, I was on my way to my class at the senior center at five minutes of eight, and there was the D P W at Jackass Park cutting the grass. I don't know if our grounds are going to be properly maintained if they don't have the staff and the money to be able to do that. Without this override, we are going to lose a lot of services in town. Services that I'm entitled to, you're entitled to. Please, please, vote for the override. Thank you.
Do we have any voters who wish to be recognized in either the cafeteria or the auditorium? I think Mr. Pace, Mr. Pace has a voter. So please make certain that you give your name loud and strong and your address, whoever the voter is.
Stephen Reese, 7 Zambard Road, proposed to end debate and...
Was that a, was that a motion to stop debate?
Yes, a motion.
I will not accept the motion.
Very well.
But thank you for making, but thank you for making it. Yes, the voter at microphone three, it was you.
Hi, I'm Susanna Hunt, and I came with four hats, but apparently my Mahjong ability and love to play. Mr. Potts, if you need any help, count me in. I don't meet your age requirement, but I love to...
If you could stay inside the scope of the article, I would say.
Sorry. So I'm coming to you as a past P T O president, past Hingham Education president, foundation president, and currently a Realtor and a homeowner in our lovely town. I think it's important to note that there have been a lot of studies done, and we all, or most of us intrinsically know, that our home values are very closely linked to our community and how strong it is, and including our schools. The National Association of Realtors has done extensive studies, and one of the things that we should know is that 26% of all buyers are influenced by the quality of their school system, and the percentage goes up as the buyer's ages go up. So it's 36% for the 22- to 29-year-old group, 46% for the 30- to 39-year-old group. The factors that they've included in that are the neighborhood, that makes a neighborhood very appealing and improve a home's value are proximity to grocery stores, shopping, entertainment, access to public transportation and major highways, the quality of the local schools, crime rates, and other such factors. It is really interesting to see that one out of every five buyers give up a bedroom or a garage in order to get into a higher-rated school system. And one out of every three buyers would settle for a smaller home just to be in a good school system. So that's pretty telling. Other institutions, like the Brookings Institute, do their own sort of research, and higher-scoring school locations in, that have been studied in the, in 100 of the largest metro areas in the country, found an average difference of over $200,000 in home prices, which means a lot when you're selling your home. It's not so great when you're buying your home, but you're buying your home in that area where you know you're going to have quality schools for your children, as we all know. And one of the main questions that people do ask us is, how are the schools? And we can have these places to send our buyers and tell them how to look up how our schools are doing, and we all know they're doing great. So we want to keep that. The National Bureau of Economic Research also uses market valuation to assess public school spending, and for every dollar spent on public schools in a community, home values increase $20. That's kind of interesting to me. So whether you have children in the school system or not in the school system, when you're selling your home, when you're part of a community, when you're buying into a community, your school system, your community, things like fire and police are really important, and I think that we all know that intrinsically, but there are actual studies out there that prove that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Russell, anyone in the auditorium? Anybody in the auditorium like to speak? Nobody in the auditorium, Mr. Moderator. David, how about your cafeteria?
We have at least one person in the cafeteria who'd like to...
I'll recognize the speaker in the cafeteria. Ask that voter to please identify him or herself.
Hello, moderator. This is Chris Kondraki. We live at 31 Myers Farm Road, and we currently have three daughters that are in, still in Hingham Public Schools, and then one is a freshman in college. But this is more of a technical question, if you could just help me on this. On page 32, there's the line that says total debt service, and that number for fiscal 2024, 8,783,729. Am I reading that correctly? So total debt service would be going to 8,783, and that's on page 32.
That is correct.
Okay, and that's of a grand total of 143,929. So that is like approaching, in terms of debt service, that's approaching 6%. But so my, my question really, though, is, and if someone can help me with this, where is, where would I find, or is it in here somewhere, that actually shows the balance sheet of how much total outstanding debt the town has, and then what it's actually allocated for in terms of like, how much interest is it, and then the principal payments? Because I understand there's big capital projects in schools, but, you know, debt service of approaching 6% of the budget. So I want, is there a place that, that...
Yeah, I understand the question, Mr. Kondraki. One observation, obviously, Mr. Kondraki's question speaks to the town's overall balance sheet, liquidity, and the like. So I will ask if there is anyone here, AdCom, or someone else other than your moderator who can answer that question with respect to the town's balance sheet. I think it's a fair question as it relates to overall commitment of resources. It obviously is being asked with respect to a line item on a matter that has already been finally decided by the meeting. So purely as an informational point, is there somebody who can responsibly answer Mr. Kondraki's question? And if not, will they be kind enough, pleased to get back to him with respect to the town's balance sheet and how much of the balance sheet is being debt versus whatever else it is? And if the question cannot be answered, there's nothing wrong with saying, we do not have that ready answer. It relates to a matter that is already closed, but we will get back to you expeditiously. Mr. Danus is approaching the center mic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for the question. Two, two sources of information, I guess, I would refer you to page 15 of the, of the warrant, where we talk about the average annual debt service, the percentage of total annual expenditures, and the financial policy as it relates to thereof. And the debt service for the town in, for the FY '24 budget is 6.7%, which is an increase from 4.9%, 4.91% in '23, but it is under the 10% level as stated in the financial policy. And there are also various financial statements on the town accounting, on the town website under the accounting section. I would ask you to go and take a look at those documents. They're readily available, and they will give you more detailed information about the town's financial...
Thank you, Mr. Danus. Is there any voter, a voter here in the gymnasium at microphones three, and then a voter at four? So I'll recognize the voter at three who's been patiently waiting for a turn.
Hi, Stephanie McHugh, 17 Howland Lane. I'm a 30-year resident of Hingham and here tonight in opposition of the override. And for those of you that are just rolling your eyes or already thinking that you want to say to me, you already know, give me the courtesy of your time and try to hear what someone else may have to say in this debate over a warrant article and the proposed motion that has a full cascade of implications, no matter what the decision is. Passing this override is a big deal, one with implications on every one of our Hingham neighbors.
Can you speak directly into the mic? I'm just losing you.
Okay, sorry. The advisory committee was charged with making recommendations that they believe is in the best interest of what they need to get done. The development of the Sustainable Budget Task Force was part of that work and a task that was a failure. The proposal before us is not sustainable. At best, is it a Band-Aid on a long-growing cancerous state that has reached a pivotal point where hard decisions need to be discussed, debated, and a resolution that meets the needs of everyone in the community needs to be defined? Sure, there have been committee meetings held, but the goals of those in the committees were to move the work of the committees forward. They were tasked with telling everyone how to reach the ideal, not always the realistic. Here's what's real. There are no new revenue options being proposed, nor are there any proposals for a sustainable budget. Look at Article 12. There's a proposal for an override to get us through this current situation exacerbated by the override outcomes of last November's election and approval of spending when there were no means outside of taxation hikes that we as a town can afford. So carrying that debt obligation, we are now being asked once again to accept higher and now permanent tax increases. The warrant clearly outlines that within five years, there will be a need for an additional override. See page 17 for an overview of how, even with this override, the forecasted revenue sources predict shortfalls starting next year over $2 million, and by 2028, predicted to be about $6 million. There is no sustainability plan being developed, and at best, we're being told they're going to look at it. Hoping for something to be developed in the future is not a strategy for success. Some will say we've not had an override since 2009. We've passed numerous motions over the past 10 years that have added financial burden, even if it was only temporary. But this override is permanent, and there is not any discussion on how to ensure we've done a better job of managing our fiscal resources and are living within our means. Prop 2.5 is put in place to ensure financial responsibility exists. Hingham has not shown financial responsibility in strategically planning how we'll be able to pay for everything we claim is a priority. We want it, and because the advisory board says yes, we will make Hingham better, the best, we should approve it without regard on how much it will cost every single person in town. And there is the memorandum of understanding, but it's just that, a memorandum that says they will look into it, not an obligation to put our books in order so that we are not relying on unassigned fund balances to rescue us each year, nor does it say we will seek all other methods of fiscal efficiency before we hit up the taxpayers again. It simply says we will look into it. Fiscal year '22, '23 were balanced because one-time funds were available. Simply, you're dipping into your rainy day fund to make household repairs. It's not a sustainable plan. The level of service budgets requires an additional $6 million to be balanced, and on page nine in the warrant is a description of what's being asked. To approve a permanent override due to a need created by failure, failure to manage what should have been considered normal cost growth, not even counting COVID, and the overall inefficient fiscal management accompanied by the expectation that we as taxpayers will approve anything because we want our schools to be sustained. AdCom is a governmental body accountable to us, the taxpayers and residents. We are the legislative body of this town and the ones that control where the money goes. Few last thoughts, we're headed into a recession, and that should mean economic conservation. Scare tactics on our town falling apart if we don't pass this are just that, scare tactics. In addition to the budgetary shortfall, this override includes additional monies for spending requests above what is outlined in the warrant. See page 10. The AdCom is clear on page 11. The expectation is that new capital needs will require, and I quote, "significant future borrowing," and that is in addition to the voter-approved debt we incurred to rebuild Foster and the Public Safety Facility. Again, no strategic plan. The debt exclusions that were passed last November, the 3.2 increase from Prop 2.5, Community Preservation Act surcharge, and previously approved debt exclusions collectively with this override would mean for the average homeowner, using Zillow's average home, Hingham home price of 1.09, would be an increase of almost 14% in 2024, and over the next five years would be at least 11% to almost 13% each year. Check the warrant. Are you prepared to pay that? Of note, according to the town report, there are 3,793 students in Hingham, and according to the community needs assessment done last fall, one in four residents in Hingham...
You have one minute.
...is over the age of 60. So with a population of about 26,000, there are more seniors than students. One final note, page 33 breakdown. There is a full 7.9 million will be allocated, where more than 5.9 is pure payroll, with more than 3.6 earmarked for the school department specifically. There has to be a better way, more responsible way to efficiently use our tax dollars, and I don't see it here in this warrant. So for those of you mom and dads out there voting yes, you will want to be consistent in your values and morals, so when your child who starts working and you help them with a car loan because they needed a car to get to work, and then they total that car, don't be surprised when they just expect you to help them and take out another car loan. You know, because you really care about them, you want them to have the best of everything. Long-term fiscal responsibility. What is it worth, and when do we say it's time? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll recognize the voter at microphone four.
Hi, my name, sorry. Hi, my name is Trevor Buckridge, 108 Bickerton Way.
Can you get closer to the mic, please, so we can understand you?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Trevor Buckridge, 108 Bickerton Way, and I'm a senior at Hingham High. In exactly a month, I will have my last day of school here, and like many seniors, I'm excited to move forward from Hingham. I won't be impacted by this override, no matter which way the vote goes. Yet, as a member of the minority of the school district population that will be able to vote on it, I feel I have a responsibility to defend the education of my peers. Hingham schools are highly recognized for their strong academics, but what sets us apart is the focus on a well-rounded education, supporting students of various interests and strengths. Unfortunately, the support is what will be most heavily under fire, with athletics, arts, and student support programs feeling a large part of the hits. Currently, 80% of students participate in at least one sport at the high school. 34% of students participate in an art class of some form, and 22% are considered high needs, suggesting that almost every student would be impacted by major cuts in these three programs. Though core classes provide a bulk of a student's knowledge, it's these other programs that give students a voice. If my family had been faced with the proposed $425 fee for participating in fifth-grade bands on top of expensive instrument rental fees, I might never have taken up the saxophone. I now take part in two after-school band groups on top of band and AP Music Theory classes that I take during school. One of these groups, Jazz Band, would be cut for middle schoolers, along with the middle school play and all other middle school after-school groups. Without a band teacher pushing me to take solos, improvise, and take charge of my section, I doubt I would have the confidence to get up here today. I doubt I would have the confidence to run for student advisory committee, become captain of varsity sport, or step up to take any leadership role in general. Though these might seem like small and convenient cuts to those who don't benefit from these programs themselves, I assure you that they have impacts on individuals that radiate throughout the school and community in ways that many might not realize. As for concerns that Hingham schools should focus on a more efficient budget rather than a better-funded one, I would argue that our district already functions almost as efficiently as it can. As it is right now, of the six towns that directly border Hingham, Hingham is second to last in money spent per pupil. This means that Rocklands, Weymouth, Norwell, and by a most dramatic margin, Hull, already have us beyond budget. Despite this, Hingham ranks second of these towns for scores in Massachusetts standardized testing. The district is already working at its max, and if spending per student is reduced, these rankings will drop, athletic records will dwindle, and high school, and high-needs students will struggle. So when you go to vote on this override, don't just think of students and programs as a whole. Think about the individuals like me whose experiences would have been greatly altered by a budget version of a high school career. Think about the elementary and middle school students that you will see around town, knowing that you made the conscious choice and effort to either grant or strip them of the same opportunities that those before them had. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I will recognize Dr. Gallo at the center mic.
Good evening. I rise this evening to add my voice to those...
Remind us who you are, please.
Oh. I thought you'd go. Dorothy Gallo, 1 Volunteer Road. So I want to join my voice to those of the many citizens who've committed their support to the override budget that's before us this evening. I am a solid proponent of using the override as a tool for allowing citizen voters to adjust the tax levy limit that our selectmen have chosen. the tax levy limit that our selectmen have chosen. And that our selectmen have chosen to place this referendum question on Saturday's ballot, and that they've supported the budget that we're talking about tonight. I don't apologize for saying I'm a solid supporter of the override process, that it is a part of the Proposition 2.5 law. As town citizens, we only have access like this by a majority vote of the Select Board. That fact will be important as I explain my unique reason for voting yes for the very large budget number that is part of this override. Now, certainly, I'm not unsympathetic to the feelings of many that $7.8 million is a very large number, and it will impact all of us differently. And because of the recent building project funding decisions, that may be a particular challenge for some of our taxpayers. I wish the number could have been smaller, just as I wish that our students were not so impacted by the loss of in-person schooling that COVID and state guidelines brought upon us, or that mitigating the resulting academic and social-emotional deficits is a slower process than many of us might have thought would be a much smaller number, or that the level of inflation that we see in our everyday life were not with us. But that is exactly why an operational override option was included by the authors of Proposition 2.5 more than four decades ago now. It simply is not possible. And I say "not possible." I don't just think it, I believe it, to provide all of a town's necessary services under a fixed year-to-year percentage increase, and whether that percentage is 2.5% or some other arbitrary number. Many of our costs are mandated, certainly in the school department, that's true, but there are mandates in many of our other departments as well. And we don't have full control of what's happening in the world, or in our country, or even within our own community at times. There are times when we just need more. Using the override tool is the right thing to do. It's not a sign of failure. It doesn't mean that our leaders are incompetent, whether we are poor planners or inefficient employees. That would be an unfair, and is an unfair, conclusion. We have no evidence that prior overrides or debt exclusions have caused more such tools to be requested. And this year, we have the thoughtful foresight, the MOU that you heard about just recently, that has been developed just to be sure that the override option is not overused, and that spending does not go awry. Budget planning back in 2002, 2008, and 2009, when we were planning for the East School, brought challenges not unlike the challenges that we're facing in the current year. Our country's financial picture was bleak. In Hingham, we had a great need for additional school space, and we had approved debt exclusions for adding modular classrooms for the middle schools, completing long postponed repairs at Foster and Plymouth River, and we were anticipating the opening of a fourth elementary school. Despite the timing, we were very open in that process about the need for an operating override, as this is an operating override-
You have one minute.
-to staff the new school with the same resources of all the other three schools. I got a visit one day just before the town meeting. It was someone from the Selectmen's Office, who despite the fact that we had cut the proposal from $2.5 million to $1.5 million, came to tell me that our selectmen would not approve on the ballot any override unless there were another reduction to something nearer $1 million. So we voted the amount of money, $1.1 million. It was approved at Town Hall at the town meeting, and we won the override, but it was not enough. And what happened was that the losses that we suffered as a result took us 10 years.
Please conclude your remarks. Your time has expired.
10 years to get back. We need to do better than that. The override option is an important one. It's something that we need to do now and needs to be in our repertoire, not as the first thing that we do when we have some deficits, but as something that's very much on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gallo. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, I was invited to offer you the opportunity to let a student who was not a voter, but who was dutifully standing at microphone number four, a Hingham resident, Anthony Cicerone, at 185 Prospect Street. Now, again, Tony is not yet a voter, so it would require the permission of the meeting to allow him to speak. All those in favor of allowing him to speak, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. You may speak for not more than six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for introducing me, and thank you to the residents of Hingham for allowing-
Speak right into that mic, please.
Thank you for the residents of Hingham for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a student here at the Hingham High School, and I would just like to voice my opinion for everybody. I would like to briefly mention the effect that these budget cuts would have on the overall quality of the education here in Hingham. Over 40 teachers will be laid off, which, under any circumstances, will worsen our students' experiences. Many professionals will be laid off, many paraprofessionals will be laid off. These are the people that allow the teachers to teach. They give aid to students who require extra assistance, allowing teachers to devote more time to teaching. Additionally, the extracurriculars in Hingham Public Schools will be severely limited if this override were not to pass. At the middle school, after-school programs will be cut, causing students to lose out on many opportunities. At the elementary schools, many teachers and specialists will be laid off, worsening the quality of students' education because of increased student-to-teacher ratios. Here at the high school, numerous programs will be affected, including the Fine Arts Program. Drastically increased elementary school, yeah, drastically increased elementary school fees will inhibit many from joining the band and orchestra program, along with other roadblocks down the line, which have been disproportionately affected by COVID already. Many electives will also be cut, limiting our opportunities down the line. Sports are also being cut here at the high school, something that would affect essentially every student registered in athletics. This would disproportionately underclassmen, as they are the ones who tend to try out for these JV and freshman teams that are proposed to be cut. But upperclassmen will be affected, too. More than double the, or more than double the number of student athletes would compete for a much smaller number of spots. The decrease in sports participation would drastically increase Hingham students' extracurricular interests, giving them less opportunities down the line. I ask you to please consider the wonderful opportunities we have in Hingham. The override will keep us going, and our excellent schooling program, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Is there any voter in the gymnasium who would like to make a comment or raise a point that we have not yet heard, either in favor of the override or in opposition? We have been at this now for approximately one hour. Anybody want to make a fresh point? Yes. Number one.
Hi, I'm Christina Osborne, 231 Hershey Street. I wasn't gonna speak. I was here, actually, I'm here for the accessory dwelling units, but I felt moved to speak because I also walked in here, and Dr. Gallo, you may remember my dad, Alfred Osborne. I helped sand these floors and varnished them one year, and he was the head custodian here for 28 years. So I thought, what would my dad say? He was a World War II vet, came back, not highly educated, not making a huge income. I taught for 30 years. I didn't make a huge income, but, and to be honest with you, if I didn't inherit this house that I live in, I couldn't afford to live here. And that's sad, but that's another issue. I wasn't gonna vote for the override. I thought, well, this is, you know, we've gotta do better. And I, first of all, want to thank the student who is graduating in a month, and also the non-voting-age student. It really was impressive. I am gonna vote for the override. But having said that, we need to do better. It's an emotional issue. My house is for sale. And I hate that. But part of it is, and this is the hard thing, is the amount of taxes. I taught in Pennsylvania in a rural school district where most of my students were Title I and Farm students, and they didn't have the benefit that I did. I graduated here in 1976. That means I'm gonna be 65 and on Medicare. And, you know, you never think you're gonna get old. But I know my father would have voted for the override because he came to work every day here, and the school was the most, well, I hope we were the most important thing, but the school was secondary. He would get up in the middle of the night. It used to be heated by coal, and he would come over and make sure that it was gonna be warm for the students when they arrived. You know? That was the kind of man he was. And I want to be the kind of person to follow that path. And I want the people of Hingham to have, the students, actually, to have the opportunity that I had. I had the opportunity of Dr. Gallo as a math teacher. God love her. It was never my strong suit. And I taught 5th grade. I could handle that. But anyway, I digress. It's a tough choice. It really is. But it's a choice that has to be made, and I just want to reiterate one more time. Overrides play a part in our budgetary process, but we need to do better so we don't need an override. You know?
Voter number four.
I'm fairly tall enough for the microphone, but I'm Rosemary-
You can just tilt it down. There you go.
I'm Rosemary Byrne, 19, Peter Hobart Drive. I was born and raised here in Hingham and came back 16 years ago to start my family. And I want to make a fresh point, so I won't hit on all the great points that everyone has already made. But I think, obviously, we have a town that we all deeply care for and really love, and a big part of that is how we take care of each other. And so what really worries me about all of the cuts that could potentially be made are the impacts it will have on the way we can provide services for mental health in this town. With the loss of the public health nurse, the loss of the social worker, the loss of the crisis clinician, and then the loss of the opportunity to add a coordinator to the senior center are all crucial, crucial cuts to our vulnerable populations. And so, while whether you personally may not need the services of a crisis clinician, many of our neighbors do and may need it one day. And when those services are provided adequately, there is an opportunity to mitigate a bigger risk to the larger community. And so if we really care about ourselves selfishly first and our community at large, we will vote to pass the override.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Laura Burns, 479 Main Street. Mr. Moderator, I move the previous question.
The motion for the previous question, as I mentioned earlier, and when I declined to accept it before, the motion for the previous question is intended to invite the meeting to end discussion and move to have a vote on the matter that is pending before it, which, of course, if memory serves me correct, is the motion of the advisory committee, which was the affirmative motion under 6.1. Is there a second on Ms. Burns's motion for the previous question?
Mr. Moderator, this is Russell in the auditorium. We did have another voter step to the microphone who'd like to be recognized.
I will, Ms. Burns, I will recognize that voter, and I should have inquired prior to accepting the question. So let me allow that voter to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ian Ford, 29 Stamford Drive, and I actually have two kids that are in 3rd grade here. So I'm definitely in favor of the override. However, I'm, my biggest concern is actually, where are we going for the shortfall in '25, '26, '27, '28? What's the plan to hopefully avoid that? And I'm just afraid that we're just kicking the can down the road, and we'll be here again talking about this next year, the following year. Hopefully, there's some other ideas that where we can find some money or save some money down the road if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that the question is a valid question and probably not one that can be readily answered by the advisory committee or others on the fly. Ms. Burns has made a motion. It has been seconded for the previous question. When we vote on it, it will end discussion. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, which is not debatable and requires a simple majority for its adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The majority is clearly in favor of the ending of debate in the gymnasium. I'll ask first, Mr. Khan, was, what was the vote in the auditorium?
The vote in the auditorium, Mr. Moderator, was in favor of ending debate.
Mr. Pace in the cafeteria?
Also favorable.
Okay, so a majority in each of the three venues has voted in favor of proceeding to vote on the operational override as recommended by the affirmative motion of the advisory committee. Whatever the outcome of the vote is, I would encourage two things: that we act on it in respect to those who may have felt otherwise, and also that we recognize that the legislative, I'm sure that Congressman Lynch, who has dutifully remained through all six, would not get up and walk out of the House of Representatives when the business of the House wasn't close to finished, and he's nodding yes, he would not do that. So therefore, I invite, if the override is of particular interest to you, whatever the outcome is, to accept it graciously, and then to remain as a legislator as the evening progresses and we do critical things, including respond by action to the voter who posed a question from the auditorium that in many ways relates to ways to mitigate, ameliorate the cost of the override. So all those in favor of the matter that is before us, which is whether to approve the total operational override in the amount of $7,890,467, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes clearly have it in the- The ayes clearly have it in the gymnasium by a simple majority. How about in the auditorium, Mr. Khan?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, the ayes have it in the, uh, in the auditorium. The vote is in favor by a majority.
Mr. Pace in the cafeteria?
Uh, Mr. Mar- Mr. Moderator, the ayes have it in the cafeteria as well.
So a majority having voted in favor of the operational override. The motion has carried. The override has been approved. Yes, Mr. Miller?
George Miller, four seventy-nine Main Street. I rise again to move to reconsider.
Well, you know what a motion for reconsideration is? It is a do-over. All those who would like to go back, turn the clocks back to eight oh seven and reconsider what we just did, please. If you wish to do this, uh, please say aye. All those opposed, no.
No.
It appears that the noes have it. The motion has failed to garner the necessary two-thirds in the gymnasium. Auditorium, please report in.
Uh, yes, uh, unanimous vote against reconsideration.
And how about in the cafeteria, Mr. Pace?
Uh, also unanimous vote against.
The motion for reconsideration has failed. We go to Article seven, which is the recommended motion of the advisory committee for a transfer from the stabilization fund. The question under Article seven reads as follow. Will the town transfer a sum of money from, from the stabilization fund and/or from available reserves for the purpose of paying debt service for excluded debt in order to reduce the need to raise said funds through the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four tax rate or act on anything related thereto? And again, I invite you, as you, uh, continue to participate in the meeting, to focus on what the stabilization fund is and what you're being invited to do and why you're being invited to do it. The stabilization fund, as the comment reads, with a balance of approximately two million dollars as of the end of two thousand twenty-two, contains premiums related to the issuance of excluded debt bonds for multiple school projects approved in the prior fiscal years. It then explain, explains what bond premiums are. Those bond premiums were transferred into the stabilization fund per Article twelve of the two thousand eleven annual town meeting, and again, Article seven of the two thousand seventeen annual town meeting, to be used to offset the bond's future debt service costs. This relates back, for example, to what Mr. Konraki was asking about in terms of the town's ability to do debt service. So here, what is happening, the end of the comment. Under that new Department of Revenue guideline, the bond premiums that are presently in the stabilization funds must, fund, rather, must be used to offset interest paid in future years on the original excluded debt. The below recommended vote, motion, rather, you do the voting. The motion would allow the DOR guideline to transfer abortion of the stabilization fund to offset the interest on the excluded debt in order to do what? To reduce the need to raise these funds through taxes. Now, because this involves money, um, from the stabilization fund, it requires for adoption a two-thirds vote of the meeting. It comes before you with the unanimous recommendation of AdCom and the Select Board, and the recommended motion is as follows. That the town transfer the sum of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars from the stabilization fund for the purpose of paying interest on the outstanding excluded debt bonds in order to reduce the need to raise these funds through the fiscal twenty-four tax rate. Is there discussion on the recommended motion? If not, we come to vote. All those voters in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. It appears in the gymnasium. How about in the auditorium, Russ?
Unanimous vote, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. How about the cafeteria, David?
Unanimous in favor.
Okay, so, uh, well more than two-thirds of the voters having voted in favor of the recommended motion under Article seven, it passes. We go to eight. Eight says, will the town appropriate from the receipts of the humanit- of the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant money for the maintenance and operation of the plant for the twelve months beginning July one, two thousand twenty-three? It's inserted by the Select Board. The comment makes it clear that the hu- the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant is self-funding. The Select Board and the advisory committee vote unanimously in favor of this article, and it reads as follows. That with the exception of the light plant's pilot payments, that's payments in lieu of taxation, it, with the exception of the pilot program to which not less than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is hereby transferred to the town's general fund, all funds received by the light plant during the twelve months that begins July one, two thousand twenty-three be appropriated to the light plant to be expended by the manager of the light plant under the control and direction of the board for the expenses of the light plant as defined by applicable Massachusetts law. And if there should be any surplus funds, receipts, rather, at the end of the period, such amount as is necessary shall be transferred to the plant's net investment in capital assets and appropriated and used for such additions to the plant as may be authorized by the light plant board during the period. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, a simple majority in favor of the recommended motion under Article eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Unanimous in the gymnasium. Russell?
Unanimous in the auditorium.
David?
Also unanimous.
Thank you. Article nine, Article nine is one we see each year. Will the town limit the total amount that may be spent from the Building Department Revolving Fund established under Article eighteen of the General Bylaws two this year? Three hundred fifty thousand dollars during fiscal twenty-four. Fully recommended by both AdCom and Select Board. The recommended motion is set forth at page thirty-five. It parrots exactly the article. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article nine? Seeing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Unanimous in the gym. David, for a change.
Unanimous in the cafeteria.
Russell?
Unanimous in the auditorium.
Article ten, the Elder Services Revolving Fund, same kind of deal. Will the town limit the amount that may be spent from the Elder Services Revolving Fund established under Article sixteen of the General Bylaws to what? To eighty thousand dollars in fiscal two thousand twenty-four. Unanimous recommendation of AdCom and the Select Board. Recommended motion is precisely, uh, parallel to the question and the article. Any discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimously. In the gym, Russell?
Unanimous in the auditorium.
David?
Also unanimous.
Article eleven, Article eleven asks the following question. Will the town raise an appropriator of transfer from available funds, a sum of money, to the town's reserve fund for use during fiscal two thousand twenty-three? So that's the year we're in right now, which will run through June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. This article is included each year in case the existing reserve fund is inadequate or may be inadequate to cover unbudgeted and unanticipated expenses for the balance of the year we're in right now. The advisory committee has made its recommendation, and the amount is seven hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-four. I'll read it again. Seven hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-four. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote on the recommendation, uh, of the advisory committee of the transfer of funds to the reserve fund for expenditure or appropriation in FY twenty-three in the amount of seven forty-one nine, one nine four. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. We have a vote in the gymnasium. Russell in the auditorium, please.
Unanimously in favor.
And how about in the cafeteria?
Also unanimous in favor.
Okay, we come to item twelve. Item twelve is another stabilization fund, therefore requires a two-thirds vote, and it asks the following question. Will the town establish a tax mitigation stabilization fund under Mass. General Laws, Laws, Chapter forty, Section five B for the purpose of setting aside funds for future appropriation by town meeting in order to reduce the need to raise these funds through the annual tax rate and to transfer an amount of money from available reserves into said tax mitigation stabilization fund? Or anything related thereto? The comment speaks for itself. I'll abstract just a bit of it because I do think it also speaks to you all as legislators to, um, consider what is being undertaken by the Select Board and others to try to mitigate, uh, the impact of these changes. The article would create a separate new fund to set aside a portion of surplus funds in any given year as a measure to mitigate the likely frequency of future operating override requests. It then speaks to what's in place now and what is being proposed. So it being proposed, the creation of a fund. It requires two-thirds of town meeting. Any transfer of resources into the fund requires a simple majority vote. But any transfer out of a stabilization fund requires two-thirds of the legislators to vote for it. So you can see the way these things are structured. The money coming in is easier than it is to get it out. So as it should be. This approval of this article requires a two-thirds vote of this meeting. You, comes before you with the unanimous recommendation of AdCom and the Select Board. The recommendation is as follows, and this is, has a material amount, so I'll read it. Recommended, that the town establish a tax mitigation stabilization fund under applicable law for the purpose of setting aside funds for future appropriation by town meeting in order to reduce the need to raise these same funds through the annual tax rate and to transfer one million dollars from available reserves into this tax mitigation stabilization fund. Is there any debate or question? Yes?
Hi, Gail Faring, fourteen Cross Street. I think I'm missing something here because this is talking about surplus funds with deficit spending. Where are we getting surplus funds?
Thank you. Uh, Al McDonald for the advisory committee or Mr. Danus for AdCom. Would you be kind enough to respond to this voter's question?
Hello, Alan McDonald, fourteen Partridge Drive, uh, representing the advisory committee. The, it, it's a very valid point, obviously. The way we would get, it, it's not a recurring source of funding. It is in any given year. At the end of the year, there's a whole process of sort of accounting. What was actually spent? We appropriated the money. Some things may not come up. Someone may have retired early and you get payroll back or just whatever happens through the course of the year. You could be getting more revenue from restaurant tax receipts or more people bought cars or whatever it might be that at the end of the year, revenues and expenses didn't match up the same way. And so some funds get kicked back into the town or turned back into the town, as the term in the, in the warrant article states. So that would be at any given year, once the accounting for the year is done, a portion of that money. And again, one of the things we specified was that we would make sure the first place any of those surplus funds would go is into unfunded balance so that we maintain that sixteen to twenty percent, um, portion of total expenditures as per the fiscal policy. But if there's an amount above that, you could go into this tax mitigation fund, again, to support the notion that if in any given year there was, we could avoid requesting a tax, uh, override question, that those, that source of funds could be used. But again, that whole question would have to be done in a given year to decide what would that use of funds be? Is it worth taking that money out of that mitigation fund?
Thank you. Is that responsive to the voter's question? Thank you. Yes?
Stephanie McHugh, seventeen, Howland Lane. He actually may want to come back because I think my, he might be able to answer my question. Somewhat clarifying, we're adding another stabilization fund, and actually, the next article is also one. Can you help us understand how the funding is going to be allocated if they're all based on surplus funds?
Yeah, so why don't we, why don't we do the following? Since we haven't done thirteen yet, we'll put a hold on that for a minute. So let us, uh, first, uh, dispatch the, um, recommended motion under Article twelve, okay? So the recommended motion under Article twelve, I've already read. It would set aside for a future appropriation an amount from then available reserves. Is there, uh, the further discussion on the recommended motion under twelve? If not, we come to vote on it. All those in favor of the recommended motion under twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, more than a majority has voted in favor in the gymnasium. Russell, I'll start with you. How about the auditorium?
Unanimously in favor in the auditorium.
Thank you. And David in the cafeteria?
Also unanimous.
Okay, so that is adopted. Now we come to Article thirteen. Article thirteen asks, will the town establish a capital stabilization fund to be differentiated from the one hundred twelve? Again, under applicable Massachusetts law, Chapter forty-five B. And this would be for the purpose of setting aside funds for future appropriation in order to pay for capital equipment and/or capital projects and to transfer the amount of money from available reserves into said capital stabilization fund. And further, will the town accept the provisions of the applicable law for the purpose of dedicating all general fund receipts from the sales of tangible supplies under the law and also sales of motor vehicles, machinery, computer equipment, furniture, and other items of personal property, but excluding real property into a capital stabilization fund? This article would create a separate new stabilization fund to set aside portion of surplus funds each year as a measure to increase support for capital spending. Again, this would require for adoption, as it says on page thirty-eight, uh, requires a two-thirds vote of the meeting. You have a recommendation, uh, from the Select Board and the advisory committee that is unanimous in favor of the article. There is one change that I'd like to point out to you. It's just a typo. Uh, in the third line of the proposed vote, which line begins, "equipment and/or capital projects." And further, you should strike the word "will" and insert in its place the word "that." I give recognition to my former federal courts professor, Tom Carey, who came up to me before the meeting to note that change. So, and further, that, the town, accept the provisions, so. Now, a question has been raised by this voter, uh, Mr. McDonald for the advisory committee. And I'd ask you, if you'd be willing, to restate the question for Mr. McDonald. To make certain that he fully understands the question and endeavors to answer it fully.
Stephanie McHugh, seventeen, Howland Lane. Can you explain how the additional creation of stabilization funds? Because now this will make four. And if they're based on allocations of excess funding, how it's going to be distributed between the four different stabilization funds?
Absolutely, sure. So like an Alan McDonald, fourteen Partridge Drive for the advisory committee. So in terms of, if, if these funds, if both, both of these funds were now created and there were the four stabilization funds, the way we'd go through the, the budget process that we've done over the past few months, as we got close to the end and sort of said, okay, we've held, we've all had, do a, held our MOU. Expenses have grown three and a half million, or three and a half, three and a half percent. Say that's, you know, what's the, I don't want to do the math, but say, but say, we need an increase of ten million dollars. And based on the two and a half percent revenue growth, new growth, again, all their different sources of revenue, we've got nine million to support funding in the schools and everything. Rather than either have to cut that million in that given year for that budget to come to town meeting and ask you, well, you know, we had ten million, but we cut a million out because we only had the nine million. Instead, we could say, for this fiscal year, we're going to take a million dollars from the tax stabilization fund to fill that gap for this year. And then there would have to be, and, and so there wouldn't be an override question or the need to do that cut in that year. You would put that decision off for a year. So in a way, is it, you use the term kicking down the can. Is the kicking the can down the road? You know, hopefully, the next year, there'd be more revenue growth to match that, uh, in the subsequent year. But it would avoid the decision of either making that cut in that year or, um, asking for a tax override. And the same instance would be on the capital thing. So again, we use in the, in the warrant article, we use the example of a, of a fire truck. Uh, you know, so if you have a one point two million dollar expense or something, that would, you either don't do a whole bunch of other sort of recurring capital expenses across the, you don't buy at a police car or you don't renovate a DPW truck or whatever it is. Instead of making that decision, you would take the million two or a portion of those funds out of the capital stabilization fund in order to support that purchase so that you could do, so you could do both. So you could purchase that fire truck or whatever it might be as well as doing the more typical recurring capital expenses. Does that make sense?
It does, but in the warrant it says it probably won't avoid potential future overrides.
It, 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 in, in respect to the way you put it, it sort of, it puts, you know, that we still have a fundamental problem of two and a half percent revenue growth with a commitment to stay at three and a half percent revenue growth. And so it's sort of, that's what Proposition 11 does, it sort of perpetually creates this discussion of how do we balance the two? And so the mitigation fund is a way to help hopefully continue providing services that the town wants, and use all different available resources to try and put off the notion of asking for tax increases.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. We now come to vote on the recommended...
Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Yes?
Susan Earl, 18 Fresh River Avenue. I have a question. It seems to me like you're creating four funds when you could easily just put everything in one. And what is this, is it a category thing or what? It's...
Thank you. So the question the voter is saying is, why do we need multiple stabilization funds? Why can't we just have one stabilization fund? For example, is there something in the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, that requires a municipality to have multiple stabilization funds, as opposed to one master stabilization fund to be funded if, as, and when, and that, and to that extent that there is basically excess cash? Is there someone, perhaps Town Council, who might venture to answer this? Or perhaps Mr. McDonald knows the answer to this? But I'll tell you who doesn't know.
I'm going to recognize Al McDonald from the Advisory Committee to answer this perfectly logical question. Right, terrific question. And, and I would say the, the simple answer would be because they're, to make sure funds are designated for very specific purposes. And again, one critical aspect of this that we point out in the warrant article is to protect that core unassigned fund balance, because that really is the town rainy day fund, that is a central part of how we get with the, with the credit agencies to get a AAA bonding, which rating, which reduces the cost of borrowing for the town, and has, as we've done the math, has a significant benefit to the town in terms of the cost of doing these major capital projects. And then, the rest of it is, I think, to sort of just to, to assign what makes, what is a reasonable way to do it, in terms of assigning sources of funds to uses of funds. And again, for the capital, one, it's the town, the source of funding for the capital mitigation fund is the sale of assets. It's, it's taking capital assets and selling them, either the auctioning process or sale, what we're going to cover next is the sale of actual property. So using those capital assets to then purchase or renovate other capital assets through the capital mitigation fund. And then, as we just discussed, on the tax mitigation fund is more on sort of looking at what are our traditional operating costs while protecting and leaving that unassigned fund balance as a specifically dedicated to true emergency types of, types of questions, so that we can dedicate, we can demonstrate to the, to the credit agencies that that is a protected source, source of funds for emergencies.
Thank you. This is John Coughlin, our Town Council, and again, I vote, I would note, rather, that the stabilization, capital stabilization fund does have some helpful language in the warrant at the bottom of 37, where it does differentiate between the tax mitigation stabilization fund and the capital. So you have an operating one under Article 12, and you have a capital stabilization fund under Article 13. But Mr. Coughlin, Town Council?
I think the simple legal answer is you can have a single stabilization fund, or you could have multiple stabilization funds. But town meeting has to designate the source of the funds and the purpose. So I think in this case, because you have different categories, it makes sense to have multiple ones, but legally, you can have as many as you want or a single one.
There you go. So this targets the application of the funds, and again, money coming in, comes in by simple majority, money going out requires a two-thirds majority, but the actual approval of the creation of the stabilization fund at its inception, i.e., right now, requires for adoption a two-thirds vote. The voter at microphone one is recognized.
Jean Garrity, 25 Kimball Beach Road. I just had a question, how much money is in the unassigned fund balance now that we've got these possible four separate accounts?
Mr. Danus or others, is there somebody who can respond accurately to the voter's question with respect to unassigned fund balance? They're pointing at Assistant Town Administrator Montseguer. The envelope, please.
So the exact number is calculated as of the end of the fiscal...
Right into the mic, please, George.
George Danus, 14 Coolidge Avenue, for the Advisory Committee. So the, the exact number is calculated as of the end of the fiscal year. So our most recent information is as of June 30th of last year, and at that time, there was this total of $35,477,647, of which $13,098,088 was excess unassigned fund balance.
There you go. Are there any other questions on this particular article, which I have now carefully closed the book? Article 13. Any further discussion before we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 13 with that one Scrivener's change on line three, striking "will" and inserting in its place "that"? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It is far more than two-thirds in the gymnasium. Russ in the auditorium, please?
The vote passed by over a two-thirds majority.
David in the cafeteria, please?
He's unanimous in the cafeteria.
Okay. Article 14. Article 14 asks the permission of the meeting to do the following. Will the town authorize but not require the Select Board to lease, strike that, to sell, lease, or otherwise transfer a parcel of land located at 32 Rockwood Road, shown on, as rather, Lot 56 on Assessors Map 62 for residential use, and provided further that the proceeds from any such sale, lease, or other transfer be deposited into the capital stabilization fund that you just created, if such fund has been, as it just was, established by town meeting, and otherwise, the proceeds shall be distributed, distributed, deposited into the general fund or act on anything related thereto. You will see that the recommendation is that we do this, that the Advisory Committee and the Select Board have voted unanimously in support of the motion under this article, that the town do exactly what the article says, basically, sell, authorize the Select Board, but not require the Select Board to sell the parcel at 32 Rockwood Road, and to use any funds from that sale for residential use going into the capital stabilization fund. Is there a discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 14. All those in favor?
Mr. Moderator?
Whoop. Yes. Take your time. I'm recognizing a voter who probably will make his way to microphone number one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Burbank, 17 Andrews Isle, which is in the Home Meadows. 34 Rockwood Road is directly opposite the Home Meadows.
Number 32, 32 Rockwood, yeah.
I noticed that the topography is mentioned in the article. Is the Concom considered as being topographical unusable?
I'm sorry, I couldn't make out the question.
The top, the topo, what?
What about the topography?
Yes.
All right, why don't I ask, I think it's Caitlin Kirk, I believe, has this one for AdCom. The question is about the topography, and I assume therefore the propriety of the property for residential use because of its topo.
Great. Caitlin Kirk, 12 Evergreen Lane. So the town took the property of 32 Rockwood Road by tax title in 1990.
Right into the mic, Caitlin, please.
Is that better?
Oh, much.
Much.
Great. So, yeah, so this warrant article would authorize but not require the Select Board to sell, lease, or otherwise transfer that parcel of land, and specifically to your question, both the Affordable Housing Trust and the Conservation Commission both assessed the land and weren't interested in using it because it didn't appear to be abillable due to the soil not being adequate for a wastewater disposal system. So that is what it's meant in the article.
Okay, will there be any restrictions put on that if it's sold to somebody who wants to develop it?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, as I read this, and it may be that Real Estate Council, Susan Murphy, will want to speak to this, but obviously, this is authorizing the board to sell the property for residential purposes, and then the question is, what price will it fetch if it has elements of it that speak to its propriety or the appropriate nature of an onsite septic system and the like? So Susan, is that something that you can speak to and assist here? This is Susan Murphy, who is Real Estate Council to the town of Hingham.
Good evening. So as stated by the Advisory Committee, the parcel was assessed by both the Affordable Housing Trust and the Conservation Commission. The parcel is a substandard parcel, which is not developable for a new single-family home if it was acquired potentially by a butter, or it could be used for an accessory building in connection with an existing single-family home, but it's not large enough or of sufficient quality to be able to put even an affordable home on it. So therefore, it's already very restricted in what its use can be, and there is no additional restrictions that are proposed in connection with the warrant article.
I hope that answers your question.
Frankly, it doesn't because a good part of that land is rock, and I don't believe you could put an accessible housing unit on rock without drilling and creating problems for the Home Meadows, which is down below, because you'd create a drain in the Home Meadows.
Exactly, and I, I think that we're saying the same thing. I'm saying, because of the condition of the land, there's very little that can be done with it. So because of the restrictions that the parcel already suffers from, no further restrictions are needed in connection with, was the determination made by staff, that no further restrictions would be needed if the town were to sell it.
Okay, that's adequate, but I'd feel much better if it was within the article itself.
Thank you, thank you for raising that.
Thank you.
Doesn't sound as if you're going to be a buyer. We need to vote on this.
Mr. Moderator?
Whoop, sorry.
Ben Burnham, 11 Downing Street. Assuming that Rockwood Road is in fact real property, and we are suggesting to put it into this new capital stabilization fund, that fund does exclude real property. So do we have a Scrivener's error here?
We wouldn't be putting real property, and you'd be putting the proceeds from the sale of real property, which would be personal to...
Okay.
Cash, vast sums apparently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Recommended motion under Article 14 reads as it reads on page 39. Is there further discussion? If not, we come to vote, requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It's unanimous in the gym. Russ?
Pass in the auditorium.
David?
Unanimous favor.
Thank you. So that's, that passes. Article 15 asks the following question. Will the town vote to amend the appropriation of $525,000 previously approved under Article 14 of the town of Hingham 2020 annual town meeting? To do what? To expand the purpose for which that appropriation may be expended as follows. Said appropriation may be expended by the Select Board for any expenses of feasibility, design, architectural, engineering, and other services related to feasibility studies through the issuance of bid documents for a senior center to be located in any public building owned by the town of Hingham or act on anything related thereto. You can see in the comment, right in the first paragraph, it says, it's asking, will the town authorize an expansion of the purposes for which money is appropriated under Article 14 of the ATM 2020 may be used in the effort to identify the best solution for an appropriate senior center for Hingham? Down a couple of paragraphs, it begins, of the $525,000 authorized at the annual town meeting in 2020, $12,000 has been expanded to cover the cost of aging in Hingham, a community needs assessment performed by the Gerontology Institute at the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Remaining $513,000 of the $525 has been held awaiting the decision about space. No new funds are being requested under this article. At the bottom of 39, it talks about in the intervening years, some Hingham seniors have expressed interest in considering an alternate site, others have expressed interest in a multi-generational facility that would have both recreational programs for all ages as well as programming specifically for seniors. Others are interested in keeping Hingham Senior Center in the center of town, and so forth. So they're looking for flexibility. When you carry over onto page 40, it says, the intent of this article is to expand the uses of the previously appropriated funds to consider a range of alternatives, including town hall spaces and alternative locations, and possible models for Hingham's senior center, et cetera. The AdCom and Select Board voted unanimously in support of this article, and you can see that the recommended motion under Article 15 be approved. Is there discussion on the recommended motion to allow for a more flexible use of that $525 with no additional money, just expanding the purposes for which those monies can be used with respect to an evolving concept of the senior center? Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 15, which is set forth at page 40 of the warrant? Ma Jean, anyone? All those, there being no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? That's unanimous in the gym. Russell, I'll start with you.
Unanimous in the auditorium.
David?
You're also unanimous in the cafeteria.
Thank you. Article 16. Article 16 is focusing again on tax relief, extension of the Hingham Senior Means Tested Property Tax Exemption. It basically asks, as the caption would indicate, will the town vote to affirm, reaffirm rather, the provisions of applicable law to allow for the continuance of the existing senior means-tested property tax exemption, and to further authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth, which is a legislature, in accordance with applicable law, to delete the expiration date contained in Section 6 of the Act, et cetera. The comment, the comment I think is helpful. It says, the article asks the town to continue the senior means-tested property tax exemption that was originally approved in 2019, but at that time, there was an expiration date. So they want to continue it, and they want to get rid of the expiration date. So when you go on to page 40, run right above the bold text, it says, the Advisory Committee and the Select Board voted unanimously in support of this article. The text of the motion follows precisely the language of the question, the article. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It's unanimous in the gymnasium. Russ, how about the auditorium?
Unanimous in the auditorium.
David?
Cafeteria is unanimous.
Okay, let's keep going. Article 17. Article 17 asks, will the town accept Massachusetts General Laws 59, Section 5C and a half, which provides for an additional real estate exemption for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under Mass. General Laws? for taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under Mass. General Laws 59-5, including certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and to provide that the additional exemption shall be up to 100% of the personal exemption to be effective for exemptions granted at, for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2023. The comment basically says that this is a desirable thing to do. And then it says, right before the AdCom and Select Board voted unanimously, if this article does not pass, the current personal tax exemptions for individuals in these groups will continue but will not be doubled. So this is to double them, following up on what Mr. Ramsey was speaking about earlier, on these programs that are being passed and funded as fully as possible. The recommended motion under 17 says that the town should accept Mass. General Laws, which provides for an additional real estate exemption for those specified taxpayers who are granted personal exemptions on their domiciles under 59-5, and these include certain blind persons, veterans, surviving spouses, and seniors, and to provide that the additional exemption shall be up to 100% of the personal exemption to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, when our new fiscal year begins. Is there discussion on the recommended motion of the AdCom and the Select Board under Article 17? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's unanimous in the gym. How about in the auditorium, Russ?
Unanimous in the auditorium.
And David, the cafeteria?
We are unanimous, Mr. Moderator.
Excellent. Article 18. Article 18 asks, will the town confirm the acceptance of the provisions of 59-5 and a similar kind of provision? This one speaks to allowing veterans to volunteer to provide services to the Town of Hingham in return for which they would receive a reduction in the real property tax obligation of that veteran and further adjust the exemption by doing what? By allowing an approved representative to provide such services on behalf of a veteran who is physically unable to provide those services, and by allowing the maximum reduction for said real estate taxes to be based upon 125 volunteer service hours in any given tax year. It then speaks to the Valor Act and the first one, two, three, four, five, six sentences of the comment, allowing municipalities to establish a real property tax reduction program for vets. Hingham first accepted the Valor Act at town meeting in 2013. At that time, pursuant to the terms of the program, an eligible vet could provide Hingham with up to 125 hours of services in exchange for a $1,000 reduction in his or her taxes for real estate in any given taxable year. We have the carryover on the second paragraph, beginning since Hingham's original acceptance. The Commonwealth has amended the statute to increase the maximum abatement to $1,500. They've also coupled it with the increases in the minimum wage, so that therefore, if you approve the motion under this article, the Select Board could choose to allow a maximum tax rebate in 2023 of $1,875 versus $1,000. The advisory committee and the Select Board have voted unanimously in favor of this article and recommends it to you for your consideration and adoption. The recommended motion follows precisely the terms of the article. Is there discussion? Yes, please. I recognize the voter who's making her way to microphone two.
Kim Johnson for Heather Lane. I just have a question.
Sure.
About how this all works together. So we passed the balanced budget. We passed the override. So are these things we're now voting on additional funds that we're saying we support through tax levies, or were they contemplated in the budgets we already passed?
Thank you. Excellent question. Who would like to poke, answer that? Lindsay, do you want to answer that question? Or perhaps, do you, Bill, do you understand the question? Lindsay's making her way to the front of all knowledge on these things.
So these items are...
Please explain who you want.
I'm Lindsay Cruiser, Ten Quail Run, member of the advisory committee. These items are already accounted for in the overlay budget, so they're already funded for. So this isn't an additional amount that wasn't planned for before. You know, several of these exemptions, including the veterans exemption, are already in play, and we have a predictable number of people who take part in them each year. So it's something that we're able to account for in the budgeting process.
Thank you. Is that an adequate answer to your question? They've already projected it. Thank you. Why don't we go for another bit? I mean, we're not going to wrap this meeting up in a single night, but we won't have as much to do tomorrow if we do some more tonight. So the next item is the... Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to vote. What happens when your wife is halfway in front of you, right? So I guess we should vote, huh? The recommendation is set forth on page 43. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. How about the auditorium, Russ?
Unanimous.
David?
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. I did that intentionally just to see if you were paying attention. Article 19. Now Article 19 is the Community Preservation Committee's recommendations under the CPC. We all understand what the CPC is at this point, the Community Preservation Act. And of course, some years ago, I began doing Article 19 in a fashion similar to Article 6. And when I look at my book right now, it tells me the following, to say, we now come to Article 19, which relates to a number of recommendations of the CPC, similar to the practice that we traditionally follow for Article 6. I will read each of the recommended items under Article 19, which is set forth at page 43 of your warrant booklet. I will read each amount to be appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or to be set aside for later spending, as recommended in each case by the Community Preservation Committee. If you would like to raise a question or objection with respect to any specific item after I have read the item and the dollar amount, please say hold, so that we will hear you in whichever venue you are. Then I will mark hold into, in my book, and we will put the held items aside until we have completed the reading of the entire list, at which point we will take up any item that has not been held, as to which no question has been raised. We'll do a provisional vote on them, then we'll go back to anything that's been held, and we'll deal with them. So we will go to page 43 of the warrant, and I will read what the, in fact, what I'm going to do is I'll just read off the recommended motion, which is actually at page 49. I'll give you a minute to do that. And again, I'll just read them. If you want to discuss something or hear more about it, just tell you hold. And if nothing gets held, we'll make quick work of this. Recommended that the town appropriate, borrow, or set aside for later spending a sum of money from the Community Preservation Funds remaining after payment of debt service or bonds and/or notes issued under Mass. General Laws 44B for the following items recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year that begins July 1, 2023. So these are the items that the CPC is recommending for expenditure or saving money for future expenditure, and there are 11. There's lots of data as to why they are recommending what they are recommending, and AdCom, the Select Board, and the CPC has voted unanimously in support of each of these 11 deals. So, one, to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $50,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used for the Community Preservation Committee for its administrative and operating expenses. That's number one. To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $735,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund for community housing purposes to be used by the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust Opportunity Fund. To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $15,592 from the Community Preservation General Fund for community housing purposes to be used by the Hingham Housing Authority for exterior restoration of the house located at 132 Scotland Street. Four, to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $12,964, or $12,964 from the Community Preservation General Fund for community housing purposes to be used by the Hingham Housing Authority for exterior restoration to the garage located at 132 Scotland Street. To appropriate an amount of money, to be, a sum of money, rather, in the amount of $7,727 from the Community Preservation General Fund for community housing purposes to be used by the Hingham Housing Authority for boiler replacement at 132 Scotland Street. To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $40,535 from the Community Preservation General Fund for community housing purposes to be used by the Hingham Housing Authority to install a fire door hold-open system for the Thaxter Park elderly housing development located at 30 Thaxter Street. Appropriate a sum of money of $178,945 from the Community Preservation General Fund for open space recreational use purposes to be used by the Hingham Recreation Commission to reconstruct the basketball court at Cronin Field. To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $55,500 from the Community Preservation General Fund for open space recreational use purposes to be used by the Hingham Recreation Commission for a feasibility study and design of pickleball courts. Nine, to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $21,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund for historic resources purposes to be used by the Hingham Public Library to digitize Hingham newspapers on microfilm. To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $93,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund for historic resources purposes to be used by the Hingham Historical Commission to paint and restore the former Tree and Park Barn located at 8 Short Street. And last, to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $109,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund for historic purposes to be used by the Hingham Girl Scout House, Inc., to rehabilitate, to meet federal and state code regulations of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Hingham Girl Scout House located at 26 Burr Road. So those are the 11 projects that are before you from the CPC. None has been held. Therefore, we would come to take action on those items. All those in favor of the recommended motion under Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote in the gym. How about the auditorium, Russ?
Unanimous in the auditorium.
And David?
We are also unanimous in the cafeteria.
Okay. This is what I propose to do. I propose to do a couple more, and then we'll call it a night, so that people have something exciting to come back for. We'll have a car chase to start tomorrow night. All right. So let us do Article 20. Article 20 is another money raiser. Article 20 asks, will the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the Town of Hingham? Which, general bylaws, and don't get confused, as I did, by the article numbers, because you say, oh, it's the wrong article, it's 18, it's 20. So what's happening here is we have questions in the warrant, which have article numbers, and they are amending sections of Hingham's general bylaws, which all also have article numbers. So the first, we do the following. Will the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the Town of Hingham, which go back to 1939, by deleting Article 18 of said general bylaws and coming up with new fees for various things? You go on to page 51, and the comment explains that this article asks the town to amend Article 18 of Hingham's bylaws to establish fees that will be collected by the Building Department, associated with inspection of various types of plumbing and gas work. And basically, it tells you the story in the next one. Hingham fees for inspecting residential and commercial installation and/or modification of gas apparatus have not been adjusted since 2010. They want to raise prices. You go to page 52. Before the recommended motion, it says, the advisory committee and the Select Board voted unanimously in support of this article, and then it recommends that the town amend Article 18 of Hingham's general bylaws by putting in a new schedule of fees. I was considering reading each and every one, but didn't think that that would be met with welcome. So when you see those things, that's what they want to do. They want to increase those fees to the amounts that are set forth on page 52. And is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 20? Hearing, yes, sir?
Gregory Partika, 316 Gardner Street. When I look at the before and after, I don't see any changes in the fees, unless maybe I'm missing something worth the type of.
Mr. Griffin, for the advisory committee, do you want to address this voter's question, including that the fees may be adjusted from time to time by the Select Board? The voter's question was, so where's the increase?
Joe Griffin.
Right into the mic. You're too, it's too far away from you.
Joe Griffin, 26 Chamberlain Run. And the fees that are listed are, the, these are the recommended increases. The older fees were not included, or are not included.
So these have been restated, to restate them at the new recommended levels, and also to allow the Select Board to increase them further, as may be warranted. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. So all those in favor of that change to the Hingham bylaw that's set forth in the recommended motion under Article 20 of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's unanimous in the gym. Russ?
It passes by a majority in the auditorium.
Okay. And David?
It also passes here.
Thank you. So that's a vote under Article 20. Article 21 is similar. It's for electrical permit fees. The permit fees, again, have not been modified since 2010, and the recommendation is that they be increased to what you see here, and that also these fees may be changed and adjusted from time to time by the Select Board as conditions warrant. The advisory committee and the Select Board voted unanimously in support of the article. The recommendation is set forth at page 55, and you see the new fee schedule, or the schedule of fees. Is there discussion? It doesn't sound as if there is. So we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion under Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's unanimous in the gym. Russell, how about the auditorium?
It passes by a majority in the auditorium.
Thank you. And David in the cafeteria?
Once again, unanimous.
Okay, we're going to do one more with your approval, and then we'll call it a night. Article 22, the naming bylaw. The naming bylaw starts at page 56, and it asks the following question. Will the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the Town of Hingham, which again, go back to 1939, to do what? To delete Article 40 of the general bylaws of the Town of Hingham in its entirety, and insert in its place the following new Article 40. So as you will recall, and I'll go over to page 58, this, this article, this question was inserted into the warrant by the naming bylaw committee, and I'll just quickly abstract a little bit, and then ask the chair of that committee to come forward. The naming bylaw committee was appointed by the Select Board in 2019, and it was then charged with considering a revision of the current bylaw, which the Select Board felt was too restrictive and may be keeping the town from opportunities to obtain private funds from donors. Okay? So the notion here is to expand the opportunity to have naming. And you can see in that first paragraph, it says, in addition, the committee continued its work from 2019 to now. The Sustainability Budget Task Force was formed, and it completed a report which recommended expanding the bylaw as currently written to what end? As a possible means to attract private funds to support capital projects on a way to defray, you know, as a way, rather, to defray... you know, as a way rather, to defray reliance on taxpayer revenue." Because we're all familiar with naming opportunities at colleges, universities, hospitals, so this is in furtherance of that kind of concept. It says at the bottom, "The committee is currently drafting proposed policy language and the Advisory Committee is recommending," as is the Select Board, they're both unanimously in support of this article. Now, Mr. Balterah is floating around here somewhere. There he is, who is the Chair of this committee. So Mr. Balterah will speak to the recommended motion under this article concerning the naming of public buildings and public lands which would be pursuant to changes in the general bylaw, Article 40. Victor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Victor Balterah, 25 Liberty Pole Road, speaking as a member actually, not the Chair of the naming.
I promoted you on the spot.
So this article proposes several changes to the town's current naming bylaw which was adopted in 2010. Hingham is unusual in even having a naming bylaw and it puts us at a disadvantage in raising donations from private sources. Most of our peer communities either have a flexible policy or address naming on a case-by-case basis. So the committee during our meetings received numerous comments that the existing bylaw does cause the town to forego money by precluding naming to recognize a donation. Two aspects of the current bylaw in particular have the effect of discouraging private philanthropy for public projects and these are existing restrictions on naming for living persons and on recognition for commercial enterprises. So the town does have a pressing need, as we've heard, for money for various purposes but to maintain recreational fields was a big highlight of comments that we received, also dugouts, bleachers and the like, and then generally to provide capital funds for new facilities. Without new revenue sources, the municipal budget simply cannot support the need. Along the same lines as the moderator has noted, the Sustainable Budget Task Force has recommended exploring revisions to the naming bylaw as an additional revenue source from private donations. So what does Article 22 do? Well importantly, it leaves the basic framework of the current bylaw in place but removes barriers to private philanthropy by allowing the town, in an appropriate case, to name a property after a significant donor. First, unlike the current bylaw, Article 22 would allow naming for living persons, however, it would continue to prohibit naming for current town employees. Second, Article 22 would allow naming for commercial businesses. Currently, the bylaw prohibits town buildings and lands from, and the phrase used in the current bylaw is, they're prohibited from bearing the name of a commercial entity. Thus, not only can an asset not be named for a commercial entity, but things like plaques acknowledging a donation or banners, for example, on, say, an outfield fence may not display a business's name. These restrictions will be removed under the revised bylaw. As for the framework, under the current bylaw, town meeting approval is required to name any public land or building except that for individual rooms in areas that take up less than 25% of the land or building, town meeting does not get involved. Instead, the board or committee with jurisdiction over the asset makes the naming decision. With Article 22, town meeting approval will still be required to name assets subject to the 25% exemption. However, the revised bylaw would expand the exemption to include ancillary or subsidiary buildings on campuses. So in other words, if the floor area of an ancillary building is less than 25% of the combined floor area of all other buildings on a campus, then naming for that ancillary building is entrusted to the board or committee with jurisdiction over the asset instead of town meeting. There would be the possibility of appeal to the Select Board as there is currently. So a good example would be a snack shop at the high school fields, provided the floor area of the snack shop is less than 25% of the total area of all other buildings on the high school campus, then the school committee would name the snack shop. The article proposes several other changes as well. For example, the revised bylaw calls for enhanced public notice and publicity regarding naming proposals. This is to maximize the community's awareness of and hopefully input on what can in some cases be controversial matters. Further, the revised bylaw directs the Select Board to adopt a policy detailing how to deal with various naming situations. The policy could address matters such as factors for evaluating proposed names, guidance for naming to recognize a major gift, the need for naming agreement, sunset clauses, types of names to be avoided, and like. Putting detail into a policy rather than into the bylaw provides more flexibility and allows changes to address new circumstances more easily than having to go through bylaw amendments. There are also changes to the purpose section of the bylaw to emphasize that naming is important to the town's public image and to remove the existing requirement that naming must be for persons or matters of significance. So this change is to allow naming to recognize a donation. Moreover, the proposal changes the definition of name to a word or phrase that recognizes an individual, entity, location, or event. Thus, calling a building by a number or a color would not be subject to the bylaw. While creation of naming opportunities for private parties is by no means a panacea for the town's financial concerns, the proposed bylaw provides an additional tool for Hingham to use in raising revenue. We think it's worthwhile for the town to have this option available. And on behalf of the naming bylaw committee, I urge you to vote favorably in, for Article 22.
Thank you, Mr. Balterah. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 22? I recognize the voter proceeding to microphone two.
Susan Earl, 18 Fresh River Avenue. So what happens when somebody else comes around and decides to give more money and change the name? We've had the Wang Center, then that name changed. We had the Sullivan Football Stadium, that changed to Gillette. So what is the process for that?
Mr. Balterah, so the question, if you're able to respond to that, is what would prevent somebody basically from outbidding, you know, Schaefer Stadium and becoming Gillette?
Sure. So we talked about, actually numerous situations like that in a lot of detail about, should we really spell out all of the possibilities that could happen in terms of someone wanting to make a donation for a name? And it seems that the best approach is to leave those details to a policy that the Select Board is directed by the bylaw to prepare and then trust to the good sense, well, initially in terms of the recommendation. So anything, any ultimate name that's voted on by town meeting has a recommendation first from the Select Board. So first, trust to the good sense of the Select Board as to whether you are going to be regularly changing names and we would anticipate that no, you would not. But ultimately, the answer for certainly a major building or land is that it's town meeting's decision. The, our peer communities tend to have, the ones that do the policies, say that naming should be done, renaming should be done very rarely and only for important reasons. And we would anticipate that Hingham's policy would say something similar. But again, it would ultimately be town meeting's decision as to whether to rename something.
Thank you, Ms. Balterah. Yes, sir?
Greg Partika again, 316 Gardner Street. The multipurpose field that's right adjacent to us will be 10 years old this year. It still doesn't have a name. In a few years, the turf will be at its end of its useful life. It will need replacement. Are we going to send that out to bid and it might become Wahlberger's Field because at the end of the day, they're the ones who make the donation, and to the woman's point earlier, the next time another major piece of infrastructure falls apart in the field, we send that out to bid and change the namings? That's what my concern is about this, that we will be going out for licensing naming purposes and change the names based on need. Now, we take our naming very seriously in here and we know, the last time we had a naming issue about buildings and things, about what happened at town meeting. The question really becomes, has this been thought all the way through? Is this about naming buildings or licensing revenue to the town?
Thank you. I would invite Sarah Amelia on behalf of the Advisory Committee to come forward and determine whether she wishes to add any additional information with respect to this question, which obviously we cannot decide the policies on the floor of town meeting, but the question is whether to expand the current naming bylaw to allow for future consideration pursuant to public hearings and the like that would allow people to participate in the very conversation that the last two voters have initiated. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sarah Blowers, 86 Hershey Street, for the Advisory Committee. I am, it's a good question and I think the history of the naming in this town, I've actually lived here since I was four, so I've been a part of a lot of town meetings regarding some of the different projects that have happened, from the high school fields to the Ward Street lights and all of those different things. I think the, I think the ultimate answer to that question, and I think, yes, the naming bylaw committee did discuss this in great detail, and I think the ultimate answer to the question is that the process that is set forth in the new bylaw removes some restrictions about the possibilities for naming, but it doesn't mandate that we allow those things and that would be something that we as a town would consider at the time. So, you know, if I were to donate $8 million, which I wish I had, to pay for the pool by myself and ask the town to name it, you know, Pooley McPoolface, I think town meeting would vote me down on that name. And that's obviously a larger than 25% area of the country club, so that would be a town meeting decision. Same with the turf field, again, I can't speak to the square footage, but I do think that's a large enough project that that would be a town meeting consideration as opposed to a school committee decision. However, even if I'm wrong and it is within the 25% exception, the school committee would consider any sort of name and part of the bylaw mandates that that process needs to be widely advertised to the town and we all need to consider, we would all have an opportunity to attend school committee meetings and speak up about those decisions and ultimately, if we didn't like the school committee decision, we would have an opportunity to appeal to the Select Board.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the recommendation under this particular article?
The moderator, a voter in the auditorium wishes.
Yes, voter in the, voter in the auditorium. I recognize said voter.
My name's Kevin Whalen from 156 Prospect Street and a couple of comments. On the subject of renaming after one name has already been accepted for, by bid, you know, there was a lot of buildings named Sackler all the way around the country and it turned out to be a bad idea to accept that money and those names were scraped off of windows in college campuses and art museums and so forth. I hesitate for us to give access to, you know, our municipal buildings and infrastructure to the highest bidder for a lot of reasons and I just find this to be bad policy that could be embarrassing in some instances and, and just, just bad policy. I go to New York City and I see the magnificent New York Public Library, which is now the Steve Schwartzman New York Public Library because he made a big contribution. I think if those people want to make large contributions and, and, you know, take out ads in newspapers, so be it, but these names can be put in place for a long time. We may regret some of these namings after the fact and I just think municipal infrastructure is for the taxpayers and perhaps we continue to, you know, memorialize people who have contributed to our town. I don't know who Mr. Cronin from the Cronin Fields is, but I doubt if it was someone who wrote a big check. So anything that liberalizes the use of large donors to buy into our infrastructure is just bad policy. That's my opinion. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
George Miller, 479 Main Street. I'm more concerned about like the Tidy Bowl Outfield getting named or something like that, so I'm particularly concerned about commercial entities who could name a section which is smaller than the 25% requirement and I could imagine, for example, the Rec Center having a really strong desire to get the money and yet it doesn't really, you know, it doesn't rise to town meeting approval, so we, you know, at best, get to harangue the Select Board about it. So, I don't know, I am, I'm pretty much opposed to this, this proposal, especially the commercial aspect of it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I note here, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Hello, this is Chuck Holpin, 25 Sigma Lane, Hingham.
Yep.
And the reason why I'm here is actually, it's kind of a comment. It's funny, I'm wearing my Bentley football jersey here and whatever it is. And I was at a 50th anniversary football celebration up at Bentley and I actually spoke with Gary Michelson. Gary Michelson is the grandson of, I guess, Mr. Michelson that donated all the land out to the football field and I think that was originally, I believe, was Michelson Field. So I guess my comment is, I just hope that with this amendment, that we respect the past, whoever was, you know, tribute that they, the names associated with like Mr. Cronin, I don't know who that is, but I hope that we have a, really think about it and make sure that those people that have donated things that are recognized and keep our history strong. So, and I, just, I'm kind of talking for Gary here, that I didn't really plan on coming up, but I guess you get the comments here, hopefully within this, this new rules and regulations that you'll respect the people from the past. Thank you.
Yeah. I do, as we look at this, draw our attention to the fact that what is being proposed here is obviously a liberalization of the opportunities here, but nothing that is being put in stone as I read this, and somebody can correct me if I'm misreading it, that this board is currently, the committee rather, is currently drafting proposed policy language for consideration by the Select Board, which language will be reviewed, debated, and adopted by the Select Board with input from the community by way of future public hearings. So obviously we can't decide the policies on the fly, but is there further debate or discussion on the proposal that would basically modify in the ways that Victor articulated or set forth in the comment, the flexibility that the naming bylaw committee and the Select Board would have? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeannie Ingram, 490 Hill Road. I work in donor relations at Harvard University and naming is one of the things that I'm responsible for one of the schools. So this is like an issue that I'm dealing with frequently and I think the benefit of having the policy kind of helps reduce all the trouble that everyone's worrying about with, you know, who gets what name. The policy's the thing that's going to really help determine how things move forward, so I think this is definitely an opportunity for, for some people to help. We were just asking about like how else are we going to get revenue? This is a revenue tool, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we come to vote? If not, we have before us a recommendation to modify the general bylaw of the town with respect to the naming, I was going to use the right thing, the naming of public buildings and public lands. The recommended motion begins at page 58. The recommended motion begins at page 58, carries over onto page 60, and comes to you with the unanimous recommendation of both AdCom and the select board. There being no further discussion, this requires for adoption a simple majority. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
There is certainly a substantial no, but it's far outweighed by the yays. How about in the auditorium, Russell?
In the auditorium, I would say the outcome is in question.
Okay. And how about in the cafeteria?
I would say there's, it sounds like a slight majority here in the cafeteria.
Can you repeat that, David? I couldn't make out what you said.
It sounds like a slight majority here in the cafeteria are in favor of the motion.
Okay. So, since they are in doubt, we'll have a standing vote. There's no alternative but to have a standing vote, because I don't know how many people are in those rooms. So, we're going to have a standing vote, and a standing vote requires, as I always say, somewhat counterintuitively, it first requires that you have a seat. So anybody who's going to vote has to first have a seat. I can't vote, so I can stand up. So anybody who's a guest can vote, and so we're going to have the tellers go to their spots. It's a good way to end the meeting for the night. We're going to have the tellers go to their spots, and while they do that, and don't do it yet, but what we do with respect to a standing vote is we wind up saying, well, all those in favor, please rise. And you will all rise at once. Anybody who is a yes vote will rise. And the tellers will proceed from the front of the room to the back, and the tellers will count the row, and then the people in that row will resume their seats. And then they'll count the next row, and then you'll be told to resume your seats if you're in the second row, and so forth. And of course, doing it that way gives them a good sightline. It gives you a sense of how many people have risen, and then we count. So I don't know if the tellers are already in position in the alternate rooms. Russell, do you have your tellers and your counters at the ready? Are they marshaled?
We have our tellers in the auditorium.
So tell me when you're ready to conduct the vote in the auditorium, Russ.
We're ready to conduct the vote in the...
And how about the cafeteria?
We're ready to start.
Excellent. So all those who are in favor of the recommended motion under Article 22, please rise and remain standing until you have, your vote has been counted and you have been directed by the people who were counting your section to tell you to sit down. Go for it. We'll start the counting, row by row, until all the yes votes are counted, and then in due course, people will be told to resume their seats and we'll count the no votes. Then all of the, all of the votes that are counted come back here, and then there's a master count. How many do we have at the full count? I mean, I mean...
1308. Do we have other tellers in the auditorium who have a count?
We're still doing the counting here in the gym, Russ and David.
Mr. Moderator, I'm told that one of our tellers has done a rundown to your neck of the woods with the tally of the yays. I don't have that with me, and we have not counted the nays yet.
We will, we will welcome said person. I will await the instruction of the town clerk as to when all of the yea votes have been tabulated from, we're all set? All right, we are all set with a number of yea votes. Will be no votes, please rise, and please remain standing until your vote is counted. The total number of votes cast were 231 yes, 45 no, and the motion under Article 22 is thereby adopted. I would entertain now a motion to adjourn the meeting until tomorrow night at 7:00. We will, presuming that that motion is made and seconded. All right, all those in favor of adjourning as opposed to going deep into the night, please say aye. The ayes must have it. And before you take off, just two quick things. Please, 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 show up and check in by 6:30. Please encourage your friends, neighbors, people who care about the totality of the warrant to be present. We will start with just a modest manner, climate action. Then we'll move to other important things, the coastal structures on the harbor, the plastic bottle bill, and such critical things. Thank you so much. We're adjourned until tomorrow here at the high school, starting at the stroke of 7:00 with a quorum and ready to rumble.